Good evening, everyone. The joint meeting of the Sacramento City Council and the Sacramento City Unified School Board will come to order. We will begin by calling the City Council formally to order here. And so I will call the role here to establish a quorum. From left to right here, Councilmember Carr.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Councilmember Geta.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hanson.
Here.
And Mayor Steinberg, I'm here. We have established a quorum. I now turn it over to the school board president, my colleague, Jesse Ryan.
Good evening. I'm also establishing a quorum for the Sacramento City Unified School District City Council Joint Meeting. Secretary, if you'll please call Rol.
Member Cochran.
Here.
Member Hanson. Member Minnick.
Here.
Member Pritchett.
Here.
Member Ryan.
Here.
Member Vang.
Here.
Member Wu.
Present.
Student member Nguyen.
Nope.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Halbo.
Halbo.
Thank you. We have a quorum. With that, we're going to open the meeting. We have a broadcast statement that is going to be read tonight by Board Member Christina Pritchett on behalf of student member Halbo.
Wait, what is her name? The student member's here. Oh, she's right here.
Student member Halbo.
This joint meeting of the Sacramento City School Board and the City Council is being recorded in its entirety and will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel on Comcast, Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse. We welcome members of the audience to address the board and council. Please complete a speaker form located in the back of the community room and give them to our communications representative along with any handouts you may have for the board and council prior to the conclusion of the item's presentation. Please speak into the microphone and state your name for the record. Please turn off your cell phones or place them on silent or vibrate.
Thank you, student member Halbo. We're going to begin this evening with a special recognition of our Burbank Engineers, followed by our pledge of allegiance. But before we do that, I want to sincerely thank our Mayor Steinberg as well as our council and school board members for being a part of this first joint meeting, the first that I've been told that we've had since 1999. I know that everyone, including those in the community who have come out to express their support of the dialogue that we'll be having tonight, are excited to see that we are in a strategic and thoughtful manner entering into partnership and collaboration at a deeper level, and this would not be possible without the leadership of Mayor Steinberg. So with that, I have the opportunity to introduce our Burbank Urban Engineers, which is really a remarkable team of student leaders that came together last spring and formed a dream team, if you will. A dream team with aspirations of creating a healthier, more positive, and vibrant community for themselves and their neighbors through entrepreneurship. Specifically, they set out to lead an ambitious plan in neighborhood development. They looked at issues of workforce development, health needs and concerns, and tackled difficult issues like crime rates within their neighborhood. These Burbank Urban Engineers entered a scaled model that you can find in the lobby of Summer of Service 3.0's Pitch-a-Thon showcase, and they ended up walking away with the first-place prize for their innovation and vision, which included a $1,000 check for their efforts. The students in turn provided their winnings to the Burbank Urban Garden, which if you haven't visited, is a phenomenal jewel within this campus, and they have also helped to continue to champion the BUG program to create a greater focus on health within the school and greater communities that serve Burbank. And with that, I would love to ask our Burbank Youth Urban Engineers to come up to speak briefly on their recent accomplishments.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. May you please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Ready, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Mauricio Villa Gomez. I'm an incoming senior at Luther Burbank High School.
My name is Stephanie Lopez, and I'm an incoming junior to the School Engineering and Sciences.
My name is Dua, and I'm an incoming sophomore, and I go to Luther Burbank.
Hello, my name is Justin, and I'm an incoming sophomore, and I go to Luther Burbank High School.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Eva Malley Vargas. I'm an incoming junior at Luther Burbank, and today we'll be presenting our summer service project.
This project is called the Building Bridges for Our Community. So this project is about making a dream, making it come true. So the first building I'll be talking about is the auto mechanic shop. The auto mechanic shop is a structure that I decided to put myself, and I want to see in my community because I see a lot of students driving in high school and don't have enough money to provide for the manufacturer, for their cars, their maintenance, and the parents are the ones that provide it. So I want to have like a student discount for our auto mechanic shop, like how we have in our light rails. We have a student discount and a senior discount. And the next building I'm talking about will be life insurance and health insurance. We need health insurance for those because some people do not have life insurance, and we need to provide that. And it would be, we need to provide it because what if one day we pass, we like pass away, and we need that money for our funerals because it's hard to fundraise. And the same building, we want sports and medical care because we need people to go get their physicals and whether they get an injury, so they could take therapy and also to maintain them for like a membership, to have good grades and have a good GPA. This small building is the rec center. The rec center is for students, young men of color, to go somewhere to be, play basketball, have counselors, and have someone there to motivate them and guide them in the right path instead of doing the wrong choices. This little one on the right is a barber shop. We want a barber shop for students to have discounts on their haircuts, all, any type of haircut. And this one is tech design. Tech design is for electronics, software, tablets, iPods, anything that comes with electronics. We want to have that in our community because the community's really lacked off from technology. And also in that same building, we want to provide video games, to make your own video games, and animated pictures and such. This yellow building right here is the community center. The community centers will be a resource for us students to get information, to go to colleges, and have a lot of info, and have like peer tutoring, and a lot of stuff to be given out to us for resources. And this little building right here, a sandwich shop. We want a sandwich shop because we don't see a lot of people eating a lot of healthy stuff in our community, so we want to impact that, have people eat a lot healthier because out here there's a lot of diabetes and a lot of obesity. And with that, we want to use our garden to provide all the vegetables and fresh veggies to help provide and get profit off of that.
Wonderful.
To add on what Mauricio said, we want our community to be a place where it's much safer and healthier. As you see on this slide, you see a gym. We want our community to have a place where they can relieve stress and be not only physically but mentally healthy because exercise proves to improve on those both cases. Also on the gym, we have positive words, positive messages to encourage our committee to make a change in their week, to add in exercise. We also have a daycare center where our children could go and learn and grow in a safe place while their parents go do work or other necessities such as shopping. We also have a pharmacy in our community because in our pharmacy, we don't have a local pharmacy, and we need that in reach of our people in our community. We need a place where people can have affordable medication and care. We also have a grocery store right there. We want our community to have a place where they could be in reach of healthy local food, such as the Burbank High School. It has a farm, and we want that produce to go to the grocery store, and we want our high school to profit of that and to make our community a much safer and more healthier place, and we want to grow that farm. So in our community, we also have bridges, which I'll let Eva Malley further explain what they represent.
Thank you, Stephanie. So on this slide, we have this bridge. It has yellow and blue to represent our Burbank, our Burbank School, our Burbank Titans, and it has positive words written on it because we want for our students to enter with positivity and to leave with positivity. We want them to see that we want to help them so they can later in the future help us. In this bridge, we have also positive words, but in different languages because we want for everyone to understand that we all live in this world because we're one. That's why we live under the same stars, the same moon, the same galaxy. That's why the world map is there because there's many cultures but one community. And so also, on the white ramps, the word "love" is written in different languages because, as I said, we want to do this because we want to love our community. Nowadays, our youth, they feel that Sacramento, Sacramento, not north or south Sac, they believe that in Sacramento, if you live in Sacramento, you won't be successful at all. That really hurt me, especially hearing it from our youth because it's their future. They're the future, and if they don't think they'll be successful here, they think they need to go somewhere else to be successful. It's not giving us Sacramento to, it doesn't represent us as a good city. And so I see as, like, if they see our environment negative, then they'll value it as a negative environment. And the way they will act on it, if they see that gang violence is right there, they'll think it's normal, and it's not normal. It's really not. And we would just want to change that negativity to a positive environment so they later see that change as well and value that change so they can see that change, that we want to help them, and that so they would want to help us. And so these bridges are our dreams. These buildings are our dreams. We want this to happen. And so our Burbank School Garden has dreams as well, which we'll tell us about. Thank you.
My name is Dua, and I'm a student in the Urban Agriculture Academy, BUG, and I'm also in the summer internship. And what we learn about is how to build our own garden beds, install irrigations, and how to work or how to use garden tools, and the beneficials of eating fresh fruits and veggies. And we learn how to grow with the seasons in our regions. Overall, we learn about all the careers in college, opportunities, and the agricultural industries in the Sacramento regions. And one of my favorite things I've done in the garden is planting plants, flowers, fruits, all kinds of stuff that we grow, and all the variety of food that we eat in the garden.
Hello, my name is Justin Sanchez Condry, and I'm a student from the Agriculture Academy, and I'm also a student intern from BUG. First, we would like to thank the Building Bridges for the community project for their support of the Burbank Urban Garden. With their support, our plan is to expand the production of our garden here at Luther Burbank to provide more fresh produce to our school cafeteria and thus reach more students in our campus and community. From there, our next step would be to expand to our community by selling to farmers' markets, grocery stores, and local restaurants, providing health benefits for the greater South, for the greater South Sacramento.
We would like to thank every one of you because we honestly didn't think that this project, this small project, will lead to something even bigger. And we want to thank each and everyone for letting us our voices to be heard. And we would like to thank the school district as well for letting us win because that will help us very much. That will help us very much, and thank you for you guys to hear us, and it's really something special to us. We really hoped that this will lead to something bigger, and we finally see that our voices can be heard, that this can happen, and we can actually help our community. Because community is with communication, and it's united. That's what community is. So we have to be united as one. Thank you.
Thank you. May I just ask a brief question? First of all, behalf of the city, thank you so much for this inspiring project. Where's it going to be displayed?
So we're thinking the Florin and Franklin intersection where Foodamax is displayed because there's a lot of building that has been shutting down, so we were thinking that's a good place to start off with.
Well, let us know how we can help ensure that that gets on display. I have to tell you, this is such a sophisticated vision. You basically presented the perfect Building Bridges community, including addressing the digital divide, gang violence, food insecurity. I mean, very sophisticated work, and to do it with the authenticity of recognizing that communities are in a place where they have needs that aren't being met, and that this Building Bridges community design is meant to be a one-stop-shop so that our community members in real time have the services that they need at every level is, for me, very inspiring.
Thank you, ma'am.
If you can stay up, we're going to take questions and comments from our council members and board members. We'll recognize you by just lifting up your arrow right here, and we'll keep the comments brief and then give you an opportunity to take a picture with the mayor and both boards.
Thank you.
Comments or questions? Board member Wu.
Thank you. I just want to say congratulations, and I think that with the vision that you, our students, are displaying at such a young age, that the wherewithal and the opportunity exists for a bright, bright future, not only for yourselves but for our community as well. So again, thank you for your efforts.
No, thank you, sir. Yes?
Vice President Minnick.
I just wanted to clarify too, because I know a lot of us came in through the back, that it's, right now, this is on display out in the lobby. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
So we can all take a peek at it, and everybody can, I'm sure they've already gotten a chance to check it out, but it's pretty impressive to see like in person, too. So thanks for having that here for us to be able to check out.
Thank you. Means a lot.
Board member Pritchett.
I just wanted to mimic my colleagues, and thank you for coming here tonight to give us this presentation and really addressing the issues that we have in our communities. And the comment that you had made about not being successful if you're in Sacramento, you tonight have proved that all wrong. You kids are going places.
Thank you.
Thank you. And board member Vang, our area board member for Luther Burbank.
Yeah, hi, guys. I just want to say again, I know I got a chance to meet a few of you guys this summer, but again, I just want to say how incredibly proud I am of each and every one of you. I think oftentimes, we always say, you know, youth are leaders of tomorrow, but really the reality is you guys are really the leaders of right now, of today, right? Your dreams, everything that you brought up today, you know what's happening on the ground, and there's a lot that I think folks on the dais, folks up here, elected officials can learn from each and every one of you. So again, congratulations for winning that $1,000, and I'm incredibly proud of each and every one of you. I also want to say, I want to thank the city at this moment as well regarding Thousand Strong partnership because I know we talked about the BUG, the Burbank Urban Garden, and a few of those internships were possible because of the partnership with Thousand Strong, so I just wanted to take this time to thank the city of Sacramento as well.
That's great.
Thank you.
More about city-district partnership in a few minutes. Let me ask Councilmember Jennings, please.
Thank you. Thank you. I think all of us were extremely impressed with the presentation, and I heard you say that you had no idea how large it was going to get when you started it, right? But you took it on, you never gave up, and you continued on to the finish line. There were a couple of things that you said throughout the presentation that I took notes on. One, you're building bridges for a better community, making Sacramento a better place and the areas that you live in a better place as well. And then you talked about making dreams come true, not only for those who participated in this, but you represented the dreams of everyone that you know in the community and in the city of Sacramento. And what was most impressive about it was that you're united as one, that you came together as one to work together in order to make all this happen. So those were the notes I took away from it. As far as an opportunity to showcase, I'd love for the city of Sacramento to see it in City Hall, where everyone who comes into the doors of City Hall to have some opportunity to be able to see it. So I'm quite certain we can find a place and a space in City Hall where it can be showcased for a week or two there so that everyone can see your great work. Again, congratulations. You have a bright future, and we're excited to be here to support you.
Thank you, sir.
Great offer. Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Jennings. As you maybe rotate this wonderful expression of inclusive community, please take Councilmember Jennings up on our offer. We'll display this proudly at City Hall.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
And can we ask you to come up on the stage to take a picture with the mayor and the council and board?
All of us.
Definitely, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Get tight here.
We're good.
Come on up, guys.
Come on in.
Come on in.
Right in the face.
Right in front. Nice job. Nice job. Congratulations.
Fabulous presentation.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Dua. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe, maybe, maybe.
I'm like, I'm twenty-nine.
Since I'm only five foot four.
Yes, please. That's perfect.
That's good. Okay, here we go, everybody.
They can still do that. I can't do it anymore.
I won't get up.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Congratulations. Really works. Good job, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you again.
So proud, extremely proud.
We're gonna keep getting up. I'm gonna move.
So at this time, we're going to open the conversation around our resolution to join Sacramento City Unified School District in planning and implementing a college promise program for the Sacramento region by September 2019, a partnership with the city of Sacramento. I'm going to begin by sharing a bit about how this came to be and then asking Mayor Steinberg to also offer some remarks. I have to say that this has been a longtime labor of love. My career, for the most part, has been ensuring that we have stronger pathways into and through college, and as the daughter of a first-generation collegegoer myself, this for me has been my pathway out of poverty, my opportunity to pursue my career dreams, and to ensure that I'm strengthening the path for others to do the same. This is a timely conversation that we're having tonight because, as I reminded Mayor Steinberg a few minutes ago, when we first began to build the models for college promise programs in California in 2008 through legislation that I had the opportunity to work on, early commitment to college, it was really then-Senator Steinberg that was one of our first champions of creating meaningful college promise programs as a tool for inspiring students and families to pursue their college dreams irrespective of their socioeconomic background, as a way to, beginning in middle school, get our students dreaming of career pathways and hopefully inspired to achieve academically, graduate from high school, and pursue their college and career goals, and also as the mechanism for encouraging intersegmental partnership that would, in fact, remove barriers to access and completion for students across the state and, in an intentional way, establish the sort of alignment and collaboration that we know is absolutely vital in ensuring that our students have an opportunity to reach their full potential and that we, as a state and in Sacramento as a region, are in a position to meet our future workforce demands. So flash forward many years, and we have begun to, across the state, have college promise programs that are yielding tremendous results, significantly increasing the number of students accessing post-secondary education, improving high school graduation rates, improving the timely completion of students once through the doors of colleges and universities. And beyond that, we know helping to lead our students into well-paying jobs that lift families out of poverty and build the economic prosperity of the region and the state. Tonight, we're going to talk about local efforts to build a gold standard regional Sacramento promise and the opportunities we have before us to seize statewide funding to provide free community college for a year to all students entering Los Rios, and a suite of supports that truly will help our students who endeavor to reach for their college dreams with a seamless path to access and completion. And so before we begin our staff presentation, I'm going to ask Mayor Steinberg to share a bit about his desire to move this work forward.
Thank you, Board President Ryan. Thank you for your inspiration and hard work. We've been talking about this meeting for many, many months, and here we are together. And I want to thank all of your board members. I want to thank my council colleagues for thinking outside the box, so to speak, that old cliche, and recognizing the importance of this partnership and this meeting. And I want to just, if I might, introduce some of our charter officers who were here tonight with us because they're every bit as integral as we are, maybe more so, in making sure that the city is a success. We have our city manager, Howard Chan, here tonight. Welcome, Howard. Our city attorney, Susanna Alcala Wood, here. Welcome to you. And our city clerk, Mindy Cuppy. Thank you so much for being here. Our assistant city manager, Chris Conlin, as well. I know he worked very hard on this, so thank you. I just wanted to make sure I made those introductions. So when I step back and think about this promise, I want to reiterate what you said at the very beginning of the meeting, that it has been a 20-year interval between our governing bodies meeting and jointly acting for the improvement of our city and its children. Tonight, we commit jointly to ensuring that the interval going forward is much, much shorter. I remember, thank you. Thank you, Tom. I remember starting an office in 1992 as a member of the city council when another mayor, for whom the district's headquarters is named, Joe Cerna, suggested the obvious but easily forgotten maximum: A city is only as good or as great as its schools. It was true in 1992, and it's even more true in 2018. For we have a common drive and vision to create thousands of new high-wage jobs in Sacramento, and yet we know that the leaders of America's new economy will only choose Sacramento if they believe and see that we are just as driven to educate and train all of our kids. We have a common drive to ensure that our kids and communities are safe and healthy. We cannot solve or even demonstrably impact generational poverty and trauma alone as respective governing bodies, but where we combine our enormous capacities to focus on genuine community building and child- and family-centered policies, we can move mountains. And we have a common drive and an obligation to do more for our common constituents amidst difficult and tight budgets. We can't do more without coming together. And so tonight, we start on two key pillars of building and rebuilding this partnership, and one is the promise. And I'm so glad that President Ryan recounted the history here. You know, my brief history is when I led the Senate, we took a bipartisan delegation of senators down to Long Beach to actually see what they were doing down there, and I remember thinking at the time, why not Sacramento? We should be leading the state when it comes to creating the pathways for our young people from cradle to full employment and beyond. And then we will talk about joint use, I know, in a few minutes as well, which is an equally important subject. And so I just want to say that we are fully committed to this partnership, but we're also fully committed to engaging the other districts in our city as well, because there are other districts, in addition, of course, to SacCity, that work within our city. And so I just cannot wait to get started, and this is a great first topic. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Mayor Steinberg, for your eloquent comments. I do want to remark on two things that were just said by the mayor that I think are so key to the conversation that we're about to have. We know that we have an economic imperative to educate our young people in the Sacramento region, because in fact, their ability to succeed will determine the well-being of our city, of our Sacramento region. But we also know that more important than the economic imperative, we have a moral imperative to ensure that each and every one of our youth can reach their full potential. And when we're talking about establishing a Sacramento regional promise, what we know is that 70% of our students will access their post-secondary dreams at a community college. And for the vast majority of low-income students and students of color, they will begin their college pathway at a California community college. So our ability to provide a seamless path, financial support, and remove barriers to completion will, in fact, determine their destiny. And so tonight, we have before us an opportunity to capitalize upon leadership at every level in our higher education segments, leadership within the city, and a commitment within the school district as well as surrounding area school districts to create a college promise that meets the needs of the region and ensures our students have the potential to reach their dreams. So I'm going to, in opening this up and having our staff come to the dais to present, recognize a few of our representatives with us tonight. Superintendent Aguilar has just entered the building, I think will be making his way up to the stage momentarily. To my right, I have our deputy superintendent Lisa Allen, who has been our fearless second commander in charge. Superintendent Aguilar is also joining us. We also have Nathaniel Browning, who will be presenting shortly, and we have Vincent, who will also be presenting, Vincent Harris, on the work that we're doing that is so aligned to ensuring that at every level, beginning in elementary school, we are looking at readiness and student achievement to ensure that we are putting students on a path to college and career. So with that, I'm going to ask our staff to begin the presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam President, Mayor Steinberg, distinguished members of the city council, school board. Thank you. I think that between Mayor Steinberg and President Ryan, they took the talking points from half of my slides. Thank you for that, I appreciate it very much. But I did want to also thank Vincent Harris and leadership from the superintendent and the board on our end in relation to some of the data pieces and a lot of the work that we're doing here within the district as well. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over right away to Mr. Vincent Harris.
Good evening. The first two slides that we'll present will really provide context on the work of why this, I'm sorry. Oh, yep. Will provide context on the work that's underway, both within our district and certainly as you are speaking to tonight for the college promise. We're excited to have an opportunity to really, to address the gaps that we see in terms of the transitions between K-12 community college and four-year universities. And so as Nathaniel spoke, President Ryan and Mayor Steinberg have really done a great job of front-loading this conversation. So this slide is meant to be just a pictorial view of the gaps that we know that currently exists, and that's why we have to think about ways that we can intentionally close these gaps, and that's the work we'll speak of shortly. President Ryan really spoke to the essence of this slide. We know that as we think about our students, as we think about outcomes, particularly as it relates to college-going, there is disproportionality, longstanding disproportionality in terms of looking where our students end up after graduating high school. You can see from this slide, it gives another representation of the difference in terms of, as President Ryan stated, this notion of where students go in terms of selectivity versus students who end up going to community college in open access. And this is something, this is an equity that we're looking to disrupt. And so ultimately, our work through the College Futures Foundation grant has started us on that journey, and obviously, tonight, we'll talk more about other strategies to help us disrupt this current inequity.
Hi, my name is Andrew Keough, I work for Mayor Steinberg. Good evening to you all, and thank you for allowing me to also speak on the subject. I wanted to give a short status quo from the economic development side from the city as well, and what we're looking at is that Sacramento is experiencing somewhat of an economic renaissance, but we need to make sure that we're actively pursuing policies that help us achieve our vision for inclusive and equitable economic growth across the entire city. And one of the, you know, there's some current work that's being done right now, we've got Thousand Strong, that was already mentioned, some of the work around our Rails Grants program that were focused on youth workforce development, but more importantly, the need for a well-trained and educated workforce is critical to our economic growth, and from a Sacramento college promise program, this could be one of the tools that really fits in well with this.
So a college promise is a commitment, an intersegmental commitment of partners coming together to help disrupt the inequity in college access in order to create a more vibrant community, create living wage jobs, and meet workforce demands. One of the most critical elements of that to start out with is building a college-going culture in order to create the willingness and the excitement for everyone to start wanting to go to college and obtain a post-secondary career or degree, followed by creating seamless pathways and supports through all the segment levels and into post-secondary. Some of the driving policies behind the Sacramento Promise work outlined here include recent legislation passed within the last 12 to 18 months. Some of that legislation includes fee waivers for first-time, full-time students that come into college through AB-19, California College Promise. SB-1440 developed the Associate Degree for Transfer, which has developed a roadmap for students to come into the community college setting and be able to matriculate two four-year programs and degrees without being caught in the college maze. And AB-705 reforms the assessment and the placement practices in higher ed to help reduce the mediation rates that are often witnessed with first-time students.
So within Sacramento City Unified, with the leadership of our board and superintendent, we've spent time really wrestling with how do we define equity access and social justice? And so this is really important for tonight's conversation, because ultimately, as we think about our theory of change, particularly as it relates to equity access and social justice, there's really four major components that are wrapped around the three kind of statements you see in front of you. The first element is this notion of making things measurable. We know that as we tackle inequities, we've got to make sure that we're able to measure them, to see them, so that we can speak to them in terms of changing those conditions. Related to that is actually being disruptive, as Mr. Browning took you through policies that are about creating conditions for success for students. We also know that we have practices within Sacramento City Unified that we have to look at to make sure that we're constantly thinking through this notion of how do we disrupt policy that may or may not be supporting our students as fully as possible, and change policy as appropriate. And then the final component of this really speaks to this notion of making students visible, seeing the changes that we make through making every student visible in terms of their outcomes, and then ultimately monitoring from a standpoint of accountability to make sure the system works as expected. And then this next slide really takes you through kind of the framing that we use as a district. There's kind of three overarching things that, for us, work together. The first is kind of this notion of seeing the system, how does the system work? And then our board has declared a core value, and you'll see within the core value, it speaks to this notion of disrupting inequities, and that's really what's powerful for us as staff, is to think about what are those inequities in the system that we must change in terms of, as Board President Ryan spoke to this notion of, we can almost predict where students go to most selective versus open-access universities, and we must disrupt that inequity to make sure we create conditions for success for all of our students. And then finally, we are guided by our guiding principle, which speaks to this notion of ensuring all students have an equal opportunity to graduate with the greatest number of post-secondary choices from the widest array of options, really holding that as a standard for us to do our jobs and to deliver for the students of our community.
So the opportunity really is about providing access to post-secondary opportunities for all students, but really specifically making sure that we're there for the underserved populations that oftentimes don't realize there are resources there to support them or know where to access the information needed. In addition, there's a number of issues around shortages that we're looking at around workforce development. For example, we have 1.2 million jobs coming up in the region, and 40% of these jobs are classified as middle skills, which require not quite a full bachelor's degree, but to some extent. And so the whole range of need really speaks to needing to offer opportunity for more individuals to get to and through post-secondary opportunities. There are a number of best practices out in the state of California alone, but then also nationally, and the first one that to look to would be Long Beach Unified, which has been recognized both nationally and by the state, as Mayor Steinberg had mentioned. Couple interesting things about Long Beach is they adopted this idea of a college promise in 2007 and began planning, and took a year of planning before initially developing it. Long Beach Unified also really focused on the intersegmental partnerships with the school district, community college, state university, and the city of Long Beach. And they really focused on developing communication strategies with families and students in order to tell or share the fact that, starting in pre-K all the way through the segments, that everyone can go to college and we're here to help you. In addition, Stockton Unified is a great best practice to look to for a couple reasons. Their Stockton Promise effort, Stockton Scholars, excuse me, was announced about a year ago, and it's right down the valley from us, so there's some really good parallels with timing there as well. And we look forward to partnering and learning more about their efforts in order to learn from and go forward. So the question that often comes up with anything being proposed is, where does the funding come from? I want to make this very clear, that the funding for the Sacramento Promise effort, as you'll hear soon from my colleague, Mr. Harris, is already things that we're doing within the district, that we're just trying to capitalize on and bring underneath a single umbrella, and making sure that we have a uniformed approach to making sure individual students are able to be afforded more opportunities, post-secondary opportunities. Some of the items that Mr. Harris will be talking about soon are already part of our funding mechanism through state and federal opportunities, but also there is room for finding and attracting grant funds as well, as you'll hear about shortly again from my colleague, Mr. Harris. The district has gone out and found some grant-funding opportunities to help build a data-sharing element of what our work is at the district, and that piece is extremely critical for the work of a college promise, is this data-sharing between segments.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yes, sir.
So Browning, so when you look at the Long Beach experience, which is longer than Stockton, what additive role did this, has the city of Long Beach played? Because I know my colleagues here to the left are all thinking about, okay, how would a city support and partner with this promise that is, for a good reason, education-centered? What's our role here?
Absolutely. So one element from the Long Beach promise that's not different from others is the city's role around bringing in business to talk to them about shortages and what they need within the business industry, as well as talking about other types of supports that business and city can help along those lines. And for that, I'm also gonna pull up my colleague, Andrew Keough, who we've been talking about this element with a lot.
And Mr. Browning, as you bring Andrew up, I did want to mention, I think what is unique about the Long Beach city partnership is that the city was actually a later entrant into the partnership. So all of the higher ed segments did the work for many years, and then the city came in, offered an internship element that was quite strong, a summer bridge transition program that they were helping to run as well, which took the promise to the next level, and I think really parallels the Thousand Strong work that we're seeing the city lead.
Yeah, I think that pretty much hit the nail on the head, and at the end of the presentation, I actually, you know, had a couple of points on this, but mainly, I wanted to really recognize the fact that the city has an opportunity to better engage the business community with the school district on workforce pathways, workforce learning opportunities, and educational and workforce development partnerships that are long-term. The other thing the city can do is lead with the business community on forming a bigger partnership around like a business roundtable or something to that effect that allows us to say, okay, we're putting our stake in the ground, not only are we really caring about educational attainment, but we're caring about workforce readiness and economic opportunity in partnership with that.
And lastly, just to recap, the, one of the primary pillars of the Long Beach promise is work-based learning, one of the components to Link Learning, which they're one of the main, the initial pilots, Link Learning pilot districts within the state as well. So I'm gonna turn it over now to my colleague, Vincent Harris.
Good evening again. I'll briefly just summarize some of the things that Mr. Browning spoke to in terms of the current context in Sacramento City Unified, in terms of where we've started through using the resources we currently have, and then also through a grant from the College Futures Foundation, really building on, streamlining, and as you saw the opening graphic, really trying to close the distance between K-12 community colleges and four-year universities. So we had the exciting pleasure this past school year in April to have an SAT day for all of our juniors, and we were able to fund that through our college block grant, college readiness block grant. And so you see here the funding summary for both this school year and this upcoming school year, where we plan to do it again. You'll see a slight increase because we actually are going to offer, not again just the SAT day, but also PSAT for our eighth and ninth years as well. So, you know, as we look at this opportunity for our students, we really realize building the pipeline for them is really giving them access early to some of the normal college-going assessments.
Link Learning Pilot districts within the state as well. So, I'm going to turn it over now to my colleague, Vincent Harris.
Good evening again. I'll briefly just summarize some of the things that Mr. Browning spoke to in terms of the current context in Sacramento City Unified, in terms of where we've started through using the resources we currently have, and then also through a grant from the College Futures Foundation, really building on streamlining, and as you saw the opening graphic, really trying to close the distance between K-12 community colleges and four-year universities. So, we had an exciting pleasure this past school year in April to have an SAT day for all of our juniors, and we were able to fund that through our college block grant, college readiness block grant. And so, you see here the funding summary for both this school year and this upcoming school year, where we plan to do it again. You'll see a slight increase because we actually are going to offer, not again, just the SAT day, but also PSAT for our eighth and ninth years as well. So, you know, as we look at this opportunity for our students, we really realize building the pipeline for them is really giving them access early to some of the normal college-going As I mentioned, SAT day was a big win for our system, for our students, and hopefully our community longer run, and you see on this chart, the increase in our incoming 12th grade students who have an SAT score, and you can see that increase of 1,700. So, thanks to our SAT day, we were able to open a significant opportunity and access for our students in terms of creating opportunities for them to have an SAT score coming into their senior year, and you see this change year over year. It's very significant across student groups and across other kind of student groupings, if you will, in terms of, we saw this applied to all of our juniors across the board. And with that, this actually opened the college-going opportunity for students, and so you'll see on this slide, we actually had 162 students who, thanks to having an SAT score, became CSU/UC eligible, and so that was a significant opportunity for our students. What that means is that the CSU has a matrix, and it combines GPA and SAT score, and based on that creates eligibility for students, and so the students in the 162 that you see in the middle chart were students who had the requisite GPA but did not have an SAT score, and so our SAT day actually opened an opportunity for those students to actually now become CSU/UC eligible. You'll also notice the bar chart on the right speaks to 431 students that are subject board alliance, that really means they're close within two semesters of being eligible, of being ready for school, and so, ready for CSU and UC. And so, basically, what we've done as a district is disaggregated that student group and looked at them in terms of those who are within a half semester, full semester, semester and a half, two semesters. And so, we're being very intentional in our work within the district of recognizing that if a student is just half a credit away from being CSU/UC eligible, then we can take intentional actions on our part, specifically credit recovery course enrollment, to make sure that we put those students in the best position possible to catch up. And so, we basically have a district plan for the whole 431, but obviously, for the 123 who are just within a half a unit, we're very focused on those students this fall to make sure that they do catch up by December. That leads us to what Mr. Browning spoke to, our College Futures Partnership, and so you see a slide here that shows our current partners. We kicked this off back in December of 2017, and you can see here all of the partners that we have with us, the district, community college, Los Rios Community College District, and our four-year universities in the region, and UC, University of California, and Merset as well. The big outcomes of this partnership really center on the things that we've been talking about thus far this evening, successful transitions, you know, really making sure our students have support as they graduate. I think both President Ryan and the mayor spoke to this very eloquently, and then making sure we have alignment between institutions to make sure that we're all working together on common outcomes that help us close the distance between K-12 community colleges and higher education, and then finally, as appropriate, identifying potential policies. Mr. Browning spoke to the current policies that exist, and we know that there may be other potential learnings in terms of other policy recommendations that may come out of this work as we dig deeper with each other. And then the essential outcomes really speak to the things that we care about overall, this notion of more students being college-eligible, more students persisting in college, more students successfully transitioning from community college to four-year college institutions, and then, of course, students who are able then to graduate with a bachelor's degree. All of this is about the work of our College Futures Partnership, and of course, having supports available for those students throughout their experiences, so that we don't just transition students from high school to college without recognizing that for some of our students, those supports may be something that they'll need throughout their college careers and being able to provide those for them, because we'll have the seamless transfer of data. And then speaking of that, we have actually three work teams. These are the ways in which we're operationalizing our College Futures Partnership. You know, the first work team is their curriculum and its research team, and they're really looking at kind of the big ideas of how do we create alignment? And so, you know, one big thing that we all are focused on, whether you're K-12 or higher education, is this notion of remediation, and so, one thing that the curriculum and research team is starting a conversation on is, how do we reduce the remedial risk for students in terms of making sure all of our students are ready for college-level work day one? And then related to that, we have our Outreach and Maticulation Work Team, and their focus is really on this notion of the transition. How do we support students who are applying to institutions of higher education or local colleges and universities? How do we ensure, you know, there's a seamless application process when students have applied, making sure we're informed on the admissions process, and that we can support them through that whole cycle of applying, being admitted, and then the notion of showing up? We know that a risk that is real across the nation is summer melt, this notion of students who are accepted, who basically say they're coming and then don't show up. The Outreach and Maticulation Team is very focused on how do we reduce the melt risk? And then finally, the backbone of this is really about the data sharing between us. What data can we uniquely share between our institutions that supports students? Data that we can share that helps our education, higher education partners profile our students, know where they may be most successful, and then data they can share with us, particularly as it relates to who's applied, who's missing a step in the matriculation process, so we can take action while those students are still within our care as K-12, to make sure that they complete all of the necessary steps to show up on time to the campuses of their choice. This following slide is just meant to just give you a quick overview of the need. The first two slides, or the first two bar charts to the left basically give you a sense of our 12th grade students, both overall and then low-income, and then the two blue and orange charts on the right give you a sense of eligibility for CSU and UC, and so this just speaks to the gap that we face in terms of the work that we're looking to do to help get more of our students eligible, so that they can successfully apply and then enroll, and then obviously graduate with a degree from their higher institution of higher learning of their choice. And then this slide is just meant to give you a sense of what is this actually, right? There's so much that can be said about what is this data that we're sharing, and this literally just gives you a list of some of the data we just spoke about just over a week ago. We met with our partners, and we talked about how do we support students in the fall, and so you'll see here a variety of data points. All these data points serve some role in terms of profiling our students, some of the data points are data points we care about as K-12 in terms of supporting our students in the application process. But the gist of this slide is really to give you a sense of, once we're in collaboration and once we have the data sharing agreements, the real promise of this partnership is this notion of being able to share data in real-time, so that we can take action, whether it's during the application season, knowing which students are eligible to have applied to Sacramento State and may not have applied yet, because Sacramento State's going to share with us some data during the application season, and we can take action with those students before the application period closes, and so that's the power of the data we have to share with each other. And then finally, as a district, we've been building tools that help us make our students visible. As we go back to the equity access and social justice definition, you know, a large part of that definition centers on data, and then it centers on data and making students visible. And so, what you have here is somewhat of a busy slide, but the gist of it is really being able to say, how can we look at our students as they apply to institutions of higher education and be able to check off critical kind of points or milestones in that process, right? Has a student applied to a community college? Has a student applied to a CSU? Has a student applied to a University of California? And being able to check off very explicitly what's happening, because this allows us then to take action and intervene wherever we see a gap in the data. And ultimately, you know, our counseling team uses this to really help students think through their next steps in terms of post-secondary. And with that, I'll turn it back over.
So, listed here are areas of exploration over the next short period of time, but I just really want to call attention to this need of developing a regional approach to all of this work listed here, because as the slides previously showed, there's a real workforce need. There's also, as the presentation from the students showed, there's a real need for equity and access and social justice, because these students who are sitting here are saying that they had very basic needs that were unmet, and so, we just very much want to engage all of the school districts within the region to make sure that we can make this a community for all individuals, really focusing on what our fearless superintendent calls a collegiship of expertise. It's not that we are wanting other potential partners to take what we just shared and make it their own, because we understand there's local context that needs to be accounted for, but rather, let's work through some of these problems together in order to make a really strong regional college promise. So, the next steps, the immediate next step is to approve the resolution before you in the agenda packet with redline edits that have been included. In addition to, it's also in the agenda packet that's been available to the community. And we want to start convening the interested parties, both educational partners, CBOs, businesses, and other interests, and begin mapping out what that partnership looks like. Also, we want to start working on identifying a proper backbone organization to help facilitate this initial work, and then come to focus on developing an annual report to keep all the partners accountable for what we've promised in a commitment. And then ultimately, we would like to have a signed college promise commitment by September 2019. That's in one year from now, so we really want to hit the ground running and make this happen quickly. And with that, are there any questions?
So, before we take questions, we're actually going to take public comment, and then we'll have questions from the council and the board. If I can remind our public commenters that we have two minutes each allotted for public comment.
There are 16 public comments. The first three are Richard Owen, Chris Smith, and Brian Kim.
And we'll recognize Richard Owen from UPE. Thank you so much for being here tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Steinberg, city council members, members of the board. Richard Owen, again, Executive Director, United Professional Educators. Obviously, we're very supportive of this effort. This is not new, but it is enhanced. We attempted this over 20 years ago, and I understand 10 years ago, we attempted something similar. I happen to represent the frontline leaders of this effort, which is principals and school administrators, and we obviously think that this is something sorely needed in Sacramento, but I must add, and in fairness to everybody, there's a dark underbelly to this. It's very difficult to talk about promises when you have 75% to 80% of African-American students not being proficient in their subject matter. There's something really wrong when you have Latino students who are 75% to 80% not proficient in the subject matter. I believe that the next joint meeting between this city council and this board should be focused on curriculum and instruction, closing the achievement gap. You can't compete in college if you can't master the fundamental skills in schools. We have some ideals as UPE relative to Measure U, for example, Mr. Mayor, where we can create regional support centers, educational support centers in these very communities where we have low achievement, so that students and families can get access to academic support, so that they can compete in the subject matter. When you have an 85% failure rate in Algebra I, there's no promise that's going to come into fruition unless you master that. The board is well aware of that. We think this is a great first step, but we're going to have to dig deeper and do more to close that achievement gap, particularly for students of color. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Owen.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council, and board members of the Sacramento City Unified School District. My name is Chris Smith, and I'm here on behalf of the Sacramento Metro Chamber. The Metro Chamber has led the charge in advocating for and supporting our regional businesses by promoting policy that helps sustain a healthy business climate and a ready workforce. To meet employer needs, we must educate and train a more diverse set of residents for in-demand jobs. Employers in the Sacramento region are in need of workers with high education and technology-relevant skills. The Sacramento region's future workforce will be a majority-minority, and in order to compete in a global economy, we must address existing educational disparities immediately. Additionally, nearly every US region is concerned with attracting talented workers. By increasing career pathway investments, we can create opportunities for our young people to achieve job readiness and attract top talent to meet employer demands. The Metro Chamber and its foundation has been working with the mayor's office and the SAC City School District in a collaborative effort to boost Sacramento's economic prosperity. By working with local businesses to create a pool of skilled, experienced young talent, this program, also known as Thousand Strong, gives high school students the opportunity to gain valuable paid work experience and open doors that would have otherwise been inaccessible. The Sacramento Promise also has the potential to elevate our region's workforce, though through convening leaders from the city, school districts, community colleges, universities, business groups, we can address the challenges of college and career readiness and endow a more diverse workforce with the skills to thrive in a global market. On behalf of the Metro Chamber and its more than 1,400 members, we commend the city council and the school board for joining in together to present the Sacramento Promise, and we look forward to continuing the conversation. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Chancellor King.
Well, good evening, Mayor Steinberg, members of the city council, President Ryan, members of the Board of Education, Superintendent Aguilar. This is an exciting night, and I am very delighted to be here on behalf of the Four Los Rios Colleges, American River College, Casumnas River College, Folsom Lake, and Sacramento City College. The step you're taking tonight, first of all, you're embodying by your presence here the sort of regional collaboration it will take us to go to the next level, and the Promise Program is an important part of making sure that the whole ecosystem of education works very well, not just for some students, but for all. And as President Ryan said, the overwhelming number of graduates in the Sacramento region are going to start at one of the Four Los Rios Colleges, so the role that we play in partnership with you is incredibly important, and we look forward to building on the partnerships that already exist. Currently, I'm delighted to say that this fall, for the first time, tuition-free is a reality for first-time, full-time students at all of the Los Rios Colleges and all of the community colleges in California. That's great news, but the agreement tonight between SAC City Unified and the city of Sacramento is an important next step, because having tuition-free for first-time, full-time doesn't get our students to the finish line. There are many other cost burdens for our students that we have to tackle together, and I know we are. So, the work will continue, and Mayor Steinberg, I have to answer one question you asked earlier. What else can the city do? We have two existing civic partnerships in the capital region with Rancho Cordova and the city of West Sacramento, where they are contributing from city funds. I know there are many competing demands on city funds, but I can assure you that a commitment of some funds to support this work will be as effective as anything you do and will be as popular as anything you do.
To what, to align capital region, is that?
The donations currently, the contributions from cities are going directly to our colleges, so the partnership with Rancho Cordova goes to Folsom Lake, and from the city of West Sacramento, the partnership is with SAC City.
For what specifically?
It's primarily books now at Rancho Cordova. The partnership with city of West Sacramento is part fees and part books, and as different funding sources are becoming available at the state level, we're evaluating how best to leverage the city contribution, the city partnership.
And Chancellor King, I want to thank you for recognizing that, because the free year of community college is a major step forward, but we recognize that the real barriers to completion often come in the forms of the total cost of college, which is books, transportation, housing, and what you're doing to find creative ways to fund that can make all the difference in the world for students who are trying to make it through.
A great point, and I want to be respectful of wrapping up in two minutes, but the Institute for College Affordability and Success, TICUS, has some compelling data that shows, contrary to what people think, the net cost for community college can be highest because the total amount of financial aid available can be the lowest. So, making fees free is important, but acknowledging those other costs and making sure that we can help students get through those financial barriers is incredibly important. So, thank you again for your presence here tonight, and also for your commitment to this partnership.
Councilman Carr has a question.
Dr. King, what's the level of support coming from those two cities?
The support for Rancho Cordova in terms of dollars is about $150,000, and they are interested in committing it, in increasing that commitment as the demand grows. The initial commitment from West Sacramento is about $450,000 a year, so very significant contributions, and a lot of bang for the buck in that sort of contribution. So, I don't want to suggest any funding sources, like Measure U, to think about in moving forward, but there are opportunities for the city in moving forward. Rancho Cordova has used their special sales tax revenue, as has the city of West Sacramento.
Thank you, Chancellor King.
Thank you very much.
Testimony duly noted.
The next three people, please, when I call your name, line up behind the podium. Nazak Wali Ali, Jason Weiner, and Phil Garcia.
Hello, council members, mayor, and board members of the Sacramento City Unified School Board. My name is Nazak Wali Ali, and I'm a commissioner on the Sacramento Youth Commission. We are the city of Sacramento's youth advisory board. We are the City of Sacramento's youth advisory body to the city council. Just listening to the presentation, there was a discussion of creating equitable pathways for students to succeed, but there seems to be a neglect to recognize the root causes. Just recently published by the Five Critical Facts series, and information derived from the California Department of Education, the Sacramento City Unified School District has the most egregious, is the most egregious suspension district for black males in the state of California. The most upsetting fact about this study is that black males from the early childhood education, which is kindergarten to third grade, are nine-point-nine times more likely to be suspended than their peers, and one-third of black male foster youths are suspended in the Sacramento County. Our school districts also suspend one in every five black male youths. And the Sacramento City Unified School District suspends more black males than the Los Angeles school districts, who actually enroll nearly seven times more black students. Being a youth advocate representative, but also just being a student of color, these facts make me feel unwelcome and embarrassed of my city, being one of the most diverse cities in the nation and a safe haven city. We should be working to be actively equitable and have equality of resources. This study also gave a lot of suggestions for our school district, but I think the most prevalent one was trying to eliminate the use of suspensions for students from K to third grade. This showed not to be effective. It actually worsened the behavior of students who are suspended, and in fact, led to multiple suspensions, expulsion, and ultimately, to prison. And it shows that if this does not appeal to you on an emotional standpoint, it also is incredible losses for our city and for the state. There was actually research done by NPR that California loses about a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars for each college dropout over the course of a lifetime. I do not want this issue to end with my comment. It's actually very disheartening that with all this talk of equality and equity, this was not brought up, and this was a very reputable study that was done on Sacramento and has been covered around the nation. I hope that we can extend this conversation. I would love to meet with any of you, because I am on the Sacramento Youth Commission, and I would love to discuss this, because I'm here to represent youth, and it is not fair that some youth are not, are set up for failure. And these racist policies need to end, especially because we are so diverse and we pride ourselves on being a diverse city. And you were elected to represent us and to protect us and our rights, and hopefully that you can uphold those duties. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Steinberg, President Ryan, council members, Board of Trustees members, and Superintendent Aguilar. My name is Jason Weiner, and I speak to you today with some experience as a Sacramento resident, as a parent with three children in the school district, starting the first, third, and fifth grades on Thursday, and as an executive fellow with the Stockton Mayor's Office and the Reinvent Stockton Foundation, who's been working to launch the Stockton Scholars College Promise Scholarship Program in that city. After providing a small number of scholarships to this year's new college students from Stockton, we're gearing up to offer a scholarship of up to four thousand dollars to any student who graduates from a Stockton Unified School District High School and goes on to community college, a four-year university, or an eligible career certification program. To quote from a white paper that Stockton Scholars published in January, "Higher education has for centuries served as a gateway to the middle class and vehicle for socio-economic mobility. College graduates, on average, earn fifty-six percent more than high school graduates and face lower risks of unemployment. Those with college degrees are more likely to achieve the American dream." Hundreds of communities around the nation have responded to this need by launching their own College Promise initiatives. These programs vary widely based on needs and resources, but data and evaluation have shown universally positive impacts on graduation, college enrollment, student behavior, and K-12 enrollment. For example, a 2017 evaluation of the Kalamazoo Promise in Michigan revealed that it has increased the percentage of students earning a post-secondary credential by ten percentage points. I'm excited for Sacramento to join this community of practice and commend you for advancing this resolution. I support its approval. At the same time, I urge the city, the district, your partners, and the team working on this initiative to consider a number of factors as you move towards an MOU and implementing this promise, based on our research and our experience in Stockton. First, engage and deeply involve the community at every step. We can't really understand the barriers facing students and families unless they're part of the process. Similarly, teachers and counselors will have incredibly important insights about those barriers and how possible actions would actually impact the ground level. Think especially carefully about the needs of first-generation and immigrant students. First-generation students, who actually comprise about a third of the population at colleges and universities nationwide, are less likely to engage in social activities at college, like studying in groups, interacting with faculty that foster success, and they have lower completion outcomes. Work together to flesh out and widely share your theory of change for the Sacramento Promise. Both the wide range of stakeholders participating in the promise and the public need to clearly understand its goals, how it will change things for our kids, and who is going to be held accountable for those goals. Lastly, promise only what you can deliver, but aim high. I commend the city and district on beginning with a modest proposal centered on aligning pathways and sharing data, rather than an unfunded scholarship or a pie-in-the-sky technology initiative. Our community must trust that you will follow through on your commitments. However, our families have, they face enormous barriers and needs, and I urge you to begin immediately exploring how you can raise funds to meet more of those needs, potentially including a scholarship fund. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Weiner. We appreciate your comments.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg, members of the city council, President Ryan, Superintendent Aguilar, and board members. My name is Phil Garcia. I'm Vice President for Public Affairs and Advocacy at Sacramento State, and on behalf of President Nelson, we want to congratulate you on this exciting partnership, which really is a game changer for the students that we all serve. Specifically, President Nelson wants you to know that we will be a committed partner with Sacramento City Unified School District, the City of Sacramento, and other surrounding secondary and post-secondary, other secondary and post-secondary institutions in the development of a regional Sacramento College Promise. You know, we obviously share in the goal of boosting college access. We share in the goal of boosting college attainment, and we understand that that begins with college readiness. So, we are fully committed in that work. We know the value of a college degree and how that transforms lives, as President Ryan mentioned earlier. You may know that Sacramento State recently won a national award for our graduation initiatives, and here this evening is our graduations are Dr. Andrew Ragnow. At the heart of that work, where we have really done a great job of getting students to pledge to take fifteen units and complete a college degree in four years, at the heart of all of that is higher expectations. First of all, starting with higher expectations of ourselves, because we know the students that come to us from Sac City Unified and from the Los Rios Community College District have those expectations. So, we are committed in this work and in this partnership, and to take that kind of commitment and effort to improving college readiness and having this initiative be successful, and we want to be there and support you in the coming twelve months as you plan and launch this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
John Perryman, Pastor Chris Logan, and Lorraine Pryor.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board and city council. Thank you all for coming down to Burbank. I'm John Perryman. I've been teaching here for over thirty years, and large portions of this community feel disenfranchised, and you coming down here is certainly an effort to help mitigate that issue. Unfortunately, talk is cheap, and these zero-cost discussions must be weighed against actions. This past June, the city, not the city, the Sac City School Board, passed a budget that largely uses, so we get seventy million in supplemental and concentration grant money and twenty million in Title I money to serve low-income and ELL youth. But most of that, over fifty million, is being used to supplant regular district expenses. Supplanting is illegal, always has been, but the enforcement mechanisms are practically Your words have to be judged by the weight of your actions, and right now, the actions of the city's school board vastly outweigh your words. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Grace and peace. My name is Pastor Chris Logan. I am the pastor of the Movement United Methodist Church, where our vision is to upend oppressive systems through our faith in Jesus. While I am excited to hear about the Sacramento Promise, I'm afraid that it will not be accessible to many African-American youth. As you know, African-Americans are the lowest-performing subpopulation in our schools, excluding those with special needs. Suspension rates are out of control, and for many black students, and many who I've had personal conversations with, it is more likely that they will end up in prison than them ending up in higher education. And I want to say that we can't be afraid to use the word "black" in the implementation and the accountability of the policies, because as Mr. Harris would agree, the data shows that black youth are the students who are most in need. So, where's the promise for black students? What focused efforts have we made to target black students to meet their specific needs? How are we going to increase communication skills, reading and writing, for black students? And why are we, and who are we going to hold accountable to make this happen? As someone who has two degrees, two higher education degrees, I am happy about this effort, but if it only reinforces white privilege, what's the point? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Lorraine Pryor, Black Youth Leadership Project. Words matter. The definition of promise is a declaration or assurance that one will do a particular thing or that a particular thing will happen. In order to get to a Sacramento promise, we have to make a promise to our students that we have been failing under the auspices of the achievement gap. For far too long, we have grouped kids who look like me into special education, kept them out of specialty programs, while keeping our athletic teams fully stocked with them. They have been suspended and expelled at exorbitant rates without their needs being assessed. The fact that you only, that we only have one black student prepared for CSU and none ready for UC coming out of Sac City Unified School District currently seems like we need to reexamine why we are doing what we are doing. Who is this program to benefit? If we aren't preparing black students to take advantage of every program that is available to them, we continue to fail them. If we can't keep them in classes because we are exposing them to culturally incompetent administrators and teachers who lack basic empathy or will to serve every child, we are failing them. As a member of the most educated demographic in this nation, a black woman, I have a promise of my own. I promise to be in your faces until we make this playing field equitable, so that all students are prepared to benefit from whatever resources being proposed, and that must include black students.
Thank you very much, Ms. Pryor. Do we have any other comments at this time?
Yes, we have seven more. Allegra Taylor, Jamar Jefferson, Frederick Gill.
And if I can remind you to please keep your comments to two minutes. I don't have a clock, but I'm trying to see the cues. It's a little hard to do over there.
Well, that won't be a problem, since my co-advocates have already pretty much said everything that I need to say, but what I do want to say is, what is the plan? You guys obviously have come up with this promise, but what is the plan for the lowest-performing group? We've been coming to the district meetings, to the board meetings. We've been questioning you about this. You take monies that's been allocated for black children, and you use those on administrative fees. We've asked you for an accounting. We've asked for an audit as to how you use the monies that was provided for you to make sure that African-American students was getting to school on time. You haven't provided that for us. So, all of this talk that you're talking about in our community is called "talk is cheap." Where is the action behind what you say? Don't misunderstand me. I'm very excited about this program. I'm excited about this program, but I want the children that need to benefit from this program to be allowed to take advantage of this program. And in order for that to happen, you've got to do something at a lower level. How are you going to get them to the promise when you can't even get them graduated? You're not getting them to school on time. And the funds that you've been provided to do those things, you take those funds and you do administrative works with it. So, where's the money that's supposed to be spent on black children in Sac City Unified School District? And why is it, you've invested eleven years in all of these studies, and in eleven years, you haven't come up with one solution? And now you want our communities to buy into a promise? Are you kidding me? We didn't wake up yesterday. We promised you that we were not going to stop coming to these meetings until you hear us and until we see some change. We want to see the equitable change in black students. You know where they are. We know where they are. You cannot provide a promise to them when you can't even promise to get them to school and you can't even promise to get them graduated, not just graduated out of the twelfth grade. What about the middle school? You guys are failing black students in City of Sacramento, and you've been failing them for years, for decades. Although, my daughter is a proud product of Sac City Unified School District, and she has received a master's degree, a product of West Campus Sac City Unified School District. But I have a son that didn't get those same benefits, and he's a product of your failed system. Promise us that you're going to do something about that.
Thank you for your comments.
How's everyone doing? Jamar Jefferson, just a community activist. This promise sounds good, but at the end of this rainbow, rainbow is dead. College debt. You should inform the children of the cost of attending higher education. You want to prepare the future for jobs that won't be there. The debt is twenty-one trillion, four-hundred-and-eighty-five billion and counting right now. Women will be directly affected, because two-thirds of student debt, which is one-point-five-trillion dollars, that's one trillion of dollars of debt, is held by struggling mothers, women, starting entrepreneurs. They're holding the debt. Unless something is done on the federal level to provide adequate wages, interest-free loans, going retroactive for principal payments only to relieve a young consumer debt, that would help. The city is attempting to pass Measure U, vote no on you now. It's a permanent tax. That is a tax forever that will make it more expensive to purchase a computer, pencils, school clothes, food, every basic service and products you need to attend higher education. Debt creates poverty. Poverty creates crime. Maybe education should be K-212 with a choice of community college, mandatory military service, or trade school. We have to raise the bar and make people understand self-governance. Have to raise the bar. Taxing people to death won't work, right? It won't work. And I would encourage also the school board. I would encourage the city and the school board to see how many men who have been in prison or in prison, how many play high school sports? How many was distracted? Caesar distracted the people and stole all their liberty. When you in prison, I believe the Thirteenth Amendment, it calls for slavery if you commit a crime. And if you're not adequately educating, you're distracting these people with sports. They're not preparing, and this is not going to benefit anybody that looks like me. So, I would love for that study to be done.
Thank you. Do we have any more public comment at this time?
That's Devonte Clark up here.
We actually. Frederick Gill.
I'm not up right now?
You've got to wait just a minute, Devonte.
I gotta wait? All right.
You've got a few other speakers in front of you, okay?
All right, all right.
Good way.
Thank you.
Frederick Gill.
Yes, Mr. Gill.
MacWorthy, Jackie Cole, Devonte Clark, Juan Flores, Thomas Ferry, and Elizabeth Villa Nera.
Am I ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I was concerned about, I was looking at the compac, impact that you had for a different school district. You've forgotten that the north part of the city of Sacramento, approximately thirty-two-thousand students in the Twin River Schools- approximately 32,000 students in the Twin River School District that are in the proper, city proper. And for some reason, I, you know, I would expect they would be included in this symposium. Would be smart to do that, having that many students. There are some high-performance school districts I can remember. In the Rio Linda Elementary School District, we had at least 10 distinguished schools in that district. And we combined with the rest of them, and things started going back. But I would suggest that we hear a lot of whatever, pistolizing, frolicking. And those, and that was a gentleman who was the president of CSROB, Julius Rosenwald. Read about him also, and the great Allison Davis at the University of Chicago. And you get all the data you want. We don't need to keep digging data, data, data. Just like, could you imagine Queen Victoria going to Disraeli? She would say, "Benjamin, get it done." Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Superintendent, I hadn't been over here since you was elected. Dolly Ann Anderson was hanging in for me. But people, some things jump out at me here. I've been around this school district since 1963. I have four daughters graduated from here and three grandchildren. And still, we got some of the same thing go up on a podium that we heard then. You can't give nobody nothing, promise nobody nothing that you don't have. You can't do it. And for what you see here, how many kids compares to people show up here? That's where your problem at. If you on that board, and you're superintendent and can't get nobody out here no more than this, you ain't doing your job. Now, we got up at Sac High, 90% surrogate. Nobody said a word. We see five, six kids come here, not one Black. How many Black kids in the school here? Wake up to facts, people. You are not doing your job, and we don't have a law in place to force you to do your job or force you out. But it's coming. President Trump gonna bring it. We gonna have to move here. Dale, keep your mouth closed, because you a part of the problem. Put this, yeah, you should have never been here to run this district. A superintendent should run this district with this vote. The Mass Day downtown. You see some money, because anything jump out here at social justice, college promise, and grants, and bonds. That's all I hear downtown, people. You can't do it that way. We need to get the private sector in here and put some of this garbage apart, like we say, old these Rensselaer Dover in West Sacramento. We Republicans was out that Saturday. We ain't heard one word about no joint venture here between the city and the school district. We saw the same thing happen with the county. We cannot go no longer continue in debt. Black folks, try to get your babies to move. I got grandbabies graduated from Charlottesville with a medical engineer. I got grandbabies here going to San Francisco State. I got a grandson, got straight A's.
Mr. Worthy, your time is up. Thank you, sir.
But you ain't talking about yesterday's time, but let's keep your mouth closed. I know when you quit.
Thank you, sir.
But this is your problem, people. District, take this back to the community instead of joining this thing here because it's garbage, as it been for the past 70 years here in this town.
Thank you.
So our next speakers are Jackie Cole, Devonte Clark, and Juan Flores.
Is there somebody with a clock that can help us out here? It is dark. We can't see. If you maybe come on up here, please?
And actually, I want to suggest what would be easier would be if we have one person who gives us a cue where we can see them, and one person who gives our speaker a cue up here, since they don't have a clock either.
Yep.
Could I just suggest we use a timer on one of the phones? It's easier.
It would make more sense.
Okay.
I'll do it.
Okay. I swear, we'll do it. There we go, and we'll give a warning from here. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Jackie Cole. Veritable Good Consulting. I work in environmental and social justice. And I don't feel like it's absolutely necessary for me to articulate a lot of the sentiments that have already been expressed this evening. So I think they have been eloquently kind of expressed so far. I should also tell you that Juan had to leave. His mom had to pick him up at 7:45, so I will also be reading his comments. But I would just like to go ahead and reiterate very briefly. You can feel and hear the sentiment of the population of folks that have made it out this evening, and those are the ones who cared and who set aside the time to show up and to share their experience and their feelings. And I do hope that you take all of those things into consideration because it's a small fraction of what's going on in all of these communities. And so as we're taking these positions into consideration as we're moving forward in all of the plans that we're making, this is something that you need to start to prepare yourselves for. We're digging into something that's deep, that's deeply rooted, that's deeply painful. And it's going to take us some time and some very considerate thought to work our way through it. I'm happy to hear about the promise effort, but you should know that that's kind of a trigger word in a lot of these communities as well. So those are my comments. I don't know if I need to wait to share Juan's. Okay. So Juan had a question for the school board. He said, "As we speak about career readiness and pipelining youth into secondary education, I would like to know what's being done now. Has the district looked into expanding career technical education programs in high school, not only to prepare youth more effectively for a career, but to also improve the school's college and career indicators from the dashboard?" And then, just so that you know, he is actually, he's a student of Valley High, but he is also heavily involved in our environmental justice work. He is a member of the IYT Improve Your Tomorrow program. He is working very closely to reestablish a better pipeline for the Sacramento Youth Commission. He has started his own group, Students for Inclusive Communities. And he is currently acting, or excuse me, working with me on our Sacramento Thrives Initiative. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Devonte?
Alright, 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 alright.
You have two minutes, Devonte.
I'm the only one that gets timed. I'm the first person to get timed.
No, no, we're timing everybody.
Now you are. Okay, how you doing, Mr. Mayor?
Good to see you.
Alright, good to see you, Mr. Carr. Good to see you, Mai Van. I support you, love you. I want to say, I want to promote empowerment over employment because I keep seeing this well-educated workforce thing. I'm off for Black entrepreneurship. So empowerment over employment, I think a better way to be more effective. I mean, this is effective. I support the promise, college, and all that. I support all that. But I think what would be more effective if we brought like trade and industrial programs back into schools a little bit, so that way we can get these kids working on careers that could teach them and feed them for generations and generations to come. Also, I believe that the Black male suspension rate is out of control, but that's another conversation we could have. And I know y'all, y'all tired and y'all want to go to sleep. But, no, I just want to say that, Mayor, I think that the 24-hour Resource and Recreational Center can help everybody. You know, the Stephon House, the library I was telling you about? I think it could help everybody. It'll motivate people. So if we can get this recreational center and resource center conversation done, I think it'll do a lot more than the promise because it's just a promise at the end of the day. Alright.
Thanks a lot, Devonte, for coming tonight.
Yeah, you're welcome, man.
Appreciate you. Very well said.
Let's have that meeting about the resource center, 24 hours.
Thank you.
The last two are Thomas Ferry and Elizabeth Villamira.
Good evening. Mayor, city council, superintendent, board president, and school board. My name is Tom Ferry, and I've been working for the district for over 39 years. I'm also chief steward for the local Teamsters Local 150. I'm up here. The business rep couldn't make it tonight. I want to, I think this is a great program. I want to thank the city council for your support for the college promise program. I also want to thank my team for being here in support of the superintendent and the school board. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final commenter. Ms. Villanueva.
Buenas noches. Soy la maestra Elizabeth Villanueva de aquí de esta escuela. Hablo en español porque voy a hablar para las comunidades que no hablan inglés y para aquellas comunidades que ni se atreven a decir quiénes son. Las personas indocumentadas que no salen y no se atreven a decir yo soy un número más por miedo, por miedo a la comunidad, por miedo al ambiente político y por falta de recursos, recursos a cómo ayudarlos. I am Elizabeth Villanueva, and I am speaking, and I'm a Spanish teacher here in school. I'm speaking on behalf of the community who do not even have voice to say I am one of those numbers because they are undocumented. The question is, what are you going to do to help those students, to help the community, to say you can also go to college? You can also get ready, go get ready, and you have that path as well. Because those, that community, many of them don't even dare to say I want to go to college because they're afraid. So far, the district has become safe haven. The question I continue asking, what are you going to do to provide the resources necessary, the support necessary to allow those students to come out of the closet and keep their dream alive, keep their hope alive, and get ready continuing college? So together, what are we going to do? This is not the work of a person. This is a community. And I will continue asking more questions because I have a lot more. What are you going to do for the undocumented community who do not even are part of the data? Because they cannot say that. How are you going to document the data? Gracias.
One more, one more public comment, which was just received from Stephen Stevens.
Hello. Good afternoon, city council and members of the board. My name's Stephen Sander, and I'm a citizen and a resident of the city of Sacramento. Thanks for taking the time to address this critically important issue. I think we're all in agreement that everyone wants more kids to go to college and be successful. I've carefully looked at the document discussion paper and listened to your staff presentation. And I'm saddened to see that there's not more of a mention of high-tech skill development and STEM. You know, it's estimated that automation could remove up to 73 million jobs by 2030. And we should be preparing our students for this rapid transition. We should be educating them about big data. We should be educating them about robotics, about machine learning, about civics. I want to echo Mr. Devonte Clark's comments about trades as well and vocational training and library/resource center. So secondly, just really briefly, I want to echo the gentle lady's comments from earlier. You know, equality and equity are distinct, and you want kids to have an equal opportunity to run the race to the finish line. But it's not equitable when some students have to start, you know, 10 seconds behind in the race. Please recognize that it's not about just access to college. It's about reaching out actively to low-income and minority students to help them get ahead. It's about righting the wrongs and taking some real tangible steps toward these folks. Thank you, and I hope to see more on the implementation side for how specifically low-income and minority students will be able to use the promise program through case studies and pilot projects.
Thank you very much. So that concludes our public comment. At this time, we'll take questions and comments from our council members and our board members. If you can please indicate that you have a request to speak by lifting your index card.
Let's have a discussion here. Looking forward to it. Who should go first? Should we flip a coin?
We'll go ahead and let the council, since we have a council member get a request to speak.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Board President Ryan. First of all, I want to thank all of your staff who put together this report, both the city and our school district staff. And also, thank all of the presenters from the public who came out here today. You know, I think a couple folks, Ms. Lorene Pryor, I think she hit the nail on the coffin right at the beginning. The nail, wait, no. On the head. On the head. It was in my second language, so. I'm learning the American idioms. But it hit the nail on the head here, right? That we have to acknowledge our failures, and I'll acknowledge that one right there, and shortcomings at the beginning. And I think what we're beginning with this discussion is that we know that there is gaps in our linkages here. And what we're attempting to do here is to learn from others' experiences of success. And the goal that everyone in our city should feel that they have a control of their future destiny is a critical one. I know myself, you know, with parents who had fourth-grade education, know the benefit of being fortunate of a public education that gets a college degree that within less than a generation can bridge into the middle class. And that was with challenges of English. That was challenges of being undocumented. And that was challenges with a school district that didn't have the adequate counseling. And all of that to say that it was, I was lucky, and we shouldn't rely on luck for our youth. We should rely on a thoughtful, on a strategy to ensure that every youth has a path to whatever they want to do, college or career. And this promise is ensuring that all of us are working together for that. First off, I think on the key thing here, Mr. Jason Weiner, we worked together many years ago on pathways. And I think your point about engaging communities.
Yes.
That is a fundamental thing. I'm glad that was your first point that you brought up, and also the issue of first-generation college-going students. Because there is that cultural component that if you have a family member who's gone to college, and that young kid already has one step ahead on that race that was brought forward. So there is a, I think, an acknowledgement of those things that need to be flushed out. This college promise sets out a number of principles here that we can benefit from, from the conversation that's happening in Stockton, that's happened at Long Beach. And I want to go back to my experience with the Long Beach Promise. Both Board President Ryan and I have been watching the evolution of that promise since almost its inception. And at that time, I had the fortune of working for an elected representative who was down there, represented that area. And one of the key things I think that has made it strong and successful is the commitment to that shared vision. When we went down there and visited the elementary schools, the high schools, the community college, and the CSU, it didn't matter who you talked to, whether it was the students, the faculty, or the administrators. They had their internal differences about how the system should be run. But one thing that was common was a commitment to a vision and a goal. And I think that's what we need to, over this next year, what this resolution that we're intending to do is get to that vision and that goal. And it has to be deliberate with the engagement of the community. A couple of things that were brought up here and that I will say that we need to keep an eye on. The benefit in where the city engaged in the Long Beach Promise was later on. I'm glad that as a city, Mr. Mayor, we're starting at the front end here. Mayor Garcia, at the time, created the Mayor's Fund for Education, which looked at ensuring that those students involved in the college promise also had internships that were paid. And that is a critical component because if your parents, or you don't come from a family with the financial ability for you to have an unpaid internship, you're never going to have that opportunity. You're never going to have that work experience. You're never going to have the flexibility to be able to do that. So I think figuring out how do we expand and grow on what the Thousand Strong Program has been doing, but looking at also that as anybody who goes through the college promise, whether it's community college at Los Rios or the CSU, that we look at how does the city engage in paid internships? We have a small model through We have a small model through university enterprises in our Department of Utilities position where we hire Sac State students part-time for some specific opportunities. I think we need to look at both the Sacramento City Unified staff positions and also the city positions and other local agencies of where can we use that same model to hire those students who go through this PROMISE and start at community college and at the CSU and say, let's hire them and give them a preference in ensuring they have a paid internship so that they can actually realize those expertises in this area. The last thing I think I want to bring up here is, you know, the Mayor Joe Serna and his wife, I will say Isabel Serna, who was the Provost and Vice President at Sac State at the time. Their commitment to education and government and the city, I think, is something that I'm glad we're bringing back. For many years, I think in the last decade, there's been a fight whether a city should be engaged in education. And it's not, and I think it's the partnership that we're trying to build here right now. And we need to make sure that we make a strong partnership in that. The only thing that I want to say that I feel is missing in this draft resolution, and I know it's a resolution because we're going to start on a full, long year, but if we're really talking about, you know, the, starting from the beginning, and you heard from many parents and members of the audience that we got to start from the early ages, there isn't a recognition of starting from the time that the kid, that the child is in kindergarten. And what I'd like to do, Mr. Mayor and Madam President, and for members of the board, is add a Section G on Section 3 that says, "To promote efforts to create college savings accounts for every kindergartner." The fact is, is that the data shows from the New America Foundation that if a child has a college savings account, no matter what the amount is, whether it's $50 or $500, that by the very nature of having a college savings account at the beginning of their education, the focus about a future career or college opportunity, whether they use it to pay for a trade school, or whether they use it to pay for college tuition or books, that that beginning conversation about their future is one that is so impactful. So what I'd like to do is make sure that we put that on there because recently in this summer's, this year's budget of the state, the state budget, there was $3 million, while not a lot of money, that was put in the Student Aid Commission to allow those schools and institutions that are present, that are ready to start college savings accounts. So if we're going to do a college PROMISE that gets us to graduation, we need to start college at the beginning, at kindergarten, where it's at the youth. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move the resolution with the added of Section G to create college savings accounts for every kindergartner in the school district.
Do we need, thank you, I think that's a great suggestion, by the way. Do we need two separate motions on the, we probably do.
Yes, we will need two separate motions.
Okay, so I need a second on the council side for Councilmember Gera's motion.
And before we vote, we were going to continue to take comments.
Of course, we're taking, I just want to make sure I get a second on the motion.
I'll give a second.
Thanks, Councilmember Jennings, okay.
Board Member, First Vice President Wu.
Thank you. I want to thank Councilmember Gera for that suggestion, and I will make that a similar motion. I want to thank Mayor Steinberg. Mayor Steinberg, you ran as the education mayor, and this is the first of hopefully many discussions that we have between the city of Sacramento and the Sacramento City Unified School District. But I will say this, unless you're blessed as an athlete with a Super Bowl ring, or you're blessed as an A-list performing artist, you know, the great equalizer in life that I've learned, the sure path out of poverty is some sort of post-secondary education. I recognize that not every child who goes to, in our schools, is thinking about college. But post-secondary education, life does not end at high school. When my parents graduated from high school, maybe you could have a successful middle-class life. But over time, there has been education inflation. And so today, once a bachelor's degree or some post-secondary education, an AA degree, is equivalent to that high school diploma from a generation ago. So we as educators, we as policymakers, must take that into consideration as we talk to our students, as we prepare them, because they don't know what they don't know. I will say, and I thank Richard Owen for his comments, we at Sac City are looking to partner with you and all of our partners to make sure that that message gets out to our children. We must make sure that not only our graduates come out as math and English language proficient, but we also have to focus on our kinders through third grade. And that was one of the functions, or goals, of our extended learning summer program. We intentionally, Superintendent and his staff intentionally identified students who are not yet proficient. And we know that during the summertime, they're going to slide back a month, two months in terms of their education. So if they're not proficient coming into summer, by the time they start in the fall again, they'll be even further behind. And we have to make sure that that gap does not widen. Now, we've identified the students, did they all 100% come to school during the summer? No. And so we have to keep looking deeper to determine why it was that we did not get 100% participation. I sat in the district office for a day making phone calls to make sure that the parents knew, number one, that their child had been signed up, and asking them if their student would be there on the first day of school. So I know that there is commitment in our parents, but the follow-through for the entire summer may not have been there because of the numbers that I've seen is we've had great participation, but not 100%. So I'm going to, I view this resolution as one of many bridges that we need to build in the continuum of our education from pre-K, TK through community college. I know that President King and the community colleges are providing an education that is not completely academic. I know that there is what we refer to in our Sac City Unified Career Technical Education. And our colleges are moving in that direction as well, they are making that as an offer. And we must make sure that our students, when they graduate, have that opportunity, that have that opportunity to realize their dream. We must make, give them that equal opportunity to graduate with the greatest number of post-secondary choices from the widest array of options. And because of that, I will make the motion to approve this resolution along with Councilmember Gera's recommendation.
Thank you, First Vice President Wu. Board Member Pritchett.
And I have Councilmember Hanson, Vice Mayor Hanson after that. Go ahead.
Thank you, President Ryan, and thank you, Member Wu, for recognizing the work that the superintendent has done to catch our students. I have two children that have attended Sac City schools and have now graduated, but I have seen myself, the failures in our district, and my children have been affected by them. Our superintendent did start a program to do an early catch, to catch our students that aren't graduating, that aren't eligible for UC, that might even not do well in junior college. We're catching those. He's a year in. It's going to take time. I know when we're parents, we don't want to wait. I've been that parent. I didn't want to wait. But I know that if the superintendent's plan had been in place when my child was getting ready to graduate, what happened then would not happen now. Six years ago, because of what happened to my child, I vowed to protect our students and make sure that this doesn't happen again. And to this day, I still vow to protect our students and make sure, so like I said, it's just going to take time. I want to just tell you how much I appreciate the parents and the community members that came out to tell us, you know, what's happening and not just think about college, let's think about also what's happening at our high schools, think about our kids that aren't graduating, think about our kids that aren't even going to J.C.'s. I have some questions for staff in regard to this resolution. And I know that they have heard me preach in this board, our school board has heard me preach many times, but I'll educate you again. My area is kind of a unique area that I represent. I represent Area 3 of Sac City Unified, and part of my area is the city of Rancho Cordova, part of my area is the city of Sacramento, and part of my area is, a very large part of my area, is the unincorporated part of Sacramento County. So I want to know, where on this does it protect those kids that are in the, or where does it serve, not protect, where does it serve the kids of that unincorporated part of Sacramento County? Because when I look at the partners and who you've been meeting with, it's not, Sacramento County's not on there. And in particular, Supervisor Don Nottoli's office, who represents that area, should probably be part of those discussions. So I'd like to know what has been done.
Yes, absolutely. So we have just initially begun reaching out to regional partners in the school districts, including SCOE. We initially started with the institutions of higher education in the area to kind of understand the landscape and how we have to approach this. There has been conversations both with internal district staff as well as city counterparts around needing to go beyond the city boundaries in, to Rancho Cordova, into the unincorporated areas, because not only is that area part of county, but there's also part of the south part of our district that's county as well, around the Fruit Ridge Community Collaborative area, for example, South Oak Park. But it also makes sense to work with the city of Rancho Cordova because they do have a PROMISE program going on as well. So these are all just elements of where we'll be heading over the next year and where we intend to head over the next year. So as Councilmember Gera said, this is just setting the intention around the work ahead.
Okay, and thank you for recognizing the work that the city of Rancho Cordova has done. And just to clarify, the superintendent and I have been doing two-by-twos with the city of Rancho Cordova. And like, as Chancellor King mentioned tonight, they do have monies for the children that are going to Folsom Lake College, that are part of the city of Rancho Cordova. But a large population of mine are in the county, they're not Rancho Cordova residents and they're not city of Sacramento residents, they are unincorporated Sacramento County.
And Board Member Pritchett, I did just want to clarify that all students, irrespective of where they reside, will get a free year of community college at a Los Rios Community College.
I appreciate that, thank you. I just want to make sure that Sacramento County is part of these discussions, that's my point. With that being said, I do agree with the change that Councilmember Gera has put forth, and I will second the motion on our side.
Vice Mayor Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor. It's wonderful to be here tonight, both the City Council and the Sacramento City Unified Board of Trustees. I know all of you, and so it's nice to all be together with an audience. And I think this is an important step on a long journey, but I do think that this is a long journey to Member Pritchett's comments. I share that because we've changed the name to a Regional College PROMISE program. It's not lost on me that our region is generally considered the sixth county region, but here we're starting with the city and the school district. The city has three other school districts at least that overlap. And so how we do this in a way that serves all the students, I think, is a good point. But I think this is an important place to start. You know, when we have these kind of conversations, we all reflect on our own journeys. And my journey was not predisposed to end up in college, neither of my parents went to college, my parents divorced when I was young, I have an older brother with autism, I moved around a lot from school to school, in public school, sometimes in parochial school, and back and forth, and it would have been very easy for me to fall through those cracks. So I think there are a lot of students in that same place who we need to think about, particularly, and it hasn't come up in here, there are two groups of students that I have in mind. One, first of all, is LGBT students, trans students, and particularly LGBT students of color. They didn't come up in the background piece that talked about those who are at risk, but certainly we know about school bullying. Indeed, in Denver, we just saw a nine-year-old boy who killed himself because he came out in his first days at school and was horrendously bullied. And we know that safe schools produce students who attain more educationally, go further, and I think those students are just as at risk sometimes, sometimes even more, because violence in particular communities against LGBT people is condoned. I know that the school district's gone a long way to create a safe and supportive environment, but those kids, I think, have special needs. The other group is our students who are at risk of homelessness or who are housing insecure. And how we serve them, I think, is really complicated, and I want to talk about that a little bit more later on our future meeting ideas. But I think that we know from the 2017 point and count, point in time count, that there were at least 186 families that were identified as unsheltered from the city-county. But also, there are a lot of other people who we're not catching because they're staying with family and relatives or friends. And I think the school district probably has better data than that last point in time count. But the Sac City School District website, from what we could find, only shows 2009-10 data. So I think as we go forward in negotiating this memo, having really good data, particularly for the students of color that we heard about earlier, but these other two groups would help us target this program so that it's not the kids who otherwise already have those opportunities that we're particularly targeting, but the people who are at risk and those families who need it the most. So I'd be happy to support the resolution. I know it's already been moved and seconded with Councilmember Gera's change. But when we get to a later point, I think that we should really work on a two-by-two solution to some of these challenges. We tend to work one-off. The school board's been a great partner to the city on particularly some of the things that we've worked through. Our Leotata Floyd Farms project is in the works. I know Kathy Allen, Assistant Superintendent, has been really helpful with that. We've had Board Member Cochran working on the repositioning of the Old Marshall School. We worked to reopen Washington Elementary, which served at-risk kids, and I think the school district deserves a lot of praise for your efforts, efforts to continue to be nimble. And of course, the Clara Center for the Performing Arts, which took a school site that could no longer be used for school because it wasn't earthquake-safe, and turned it into a valuable community asset that still supports free-form learning and other stuff. So I believe that the school district has been a great partner. I know that sometimes politics and issues that aren't on our agenda get in the way of collaboration, but I believe that we have a shared destiny. The city's economic prosperity is the school district's economic prosperity, and the more we lift those most at-risk, the more we will succeed together.
So can I just, Mayor, real briefly pick up on Vice Mayor's suggestion, because I think it's a good one, I just have an open dialogue here. This is, when we pass this resolution tonight, we'll arguably be handing this off to our very fine staffs to work on this, but I think it would be very helpful if this were guided by the board membership and the council membership as well, and if you'd be agreeable, for both items, actually, both the PROMISE and the next item, the joint-use item, maybe we should add to the resolution, if you will, the appointment of, say, two members, if that's appropriate, from each body, to actually go to work with our staffs to guide this, because I think that the combination of the elected leaderships together with our staffs, we can really drive this and in an even more forceful and positive way.
Mayor Steinberg, I think that's a phenomenal suggestion and absolutely critical. Also, Vice Mayor Hanson, to us seeing this work move forward.
I'd welcome that amendment to the motion.
Okay. Same on your side?
Yes.
Yes.
Good, okay, I got Councilmember Carr here who has a comment.
Thank you, Mayor.
And then Councilmember Jennings.
I want to make sure I understand the addition that's being made. What are you recommending?
Yeah, it'd be in Section 3, subsection G, and similar to what F says, it would basically say, promote efforts to create college savings accounts for every kindergartner. to create college savings accounts for every kindergartner. And essentially, we already have pilot programs in the city. And also, there is money currently available at the state that if we act judiciously and have that as a way for us to ensure we access those, those resources and the data's there about the college-going outcomes when you start that early, just to sheer act. So it, and it's on, and it's, I think it's on page two of the resolution. So it's Section 3, Subsection G.
Section 3, Subsection G.
And then the second addition of the appointment of the two-by-two to negotiate and work out the, the actual details.
Yes.
Interest-based negotiation, by the way.
You know.
Go ahead, Larry, were you done?
No, I'm not.
Okay, go ahead.
I needed to look at what he was recommending.
Okay.
A couple, a couple of observations. One, I'm very sensitive to the remarks that some of the speakers made about some communities being left out. And what we're going to do about that, what's the plan to fix that? It's a, it's a bewildering thing to me because some students in the same school system in the same classrooms will excel. My bang down at the other end of the table is one of them, oldest of 16 children. Neither of her parents went to college. She excelled in the same classrooms that I had students failing in. I taught at Sacramento High School for five years. So it's always been perplexing to me what that is, what that's all about. I appreciate the presentation. I think it has an opportunity to address some of the issues that were being raised, but only if we get more specific. I don't think it's enough to say we're going to increase class attendance or increase the number of kids that go to college or increase the number that are eligible. We need to put a name on that. We need to say how many we're going to increase and over what period of time. And that will then drive a strategy that you can put together to make that happen. So I'm, I'm a little hesitant to start picking things out of the sky and saying, implement this particular strategy in isolation of the total strategy that's going to be put together to achieve the goal. But first, we have to get more specific about the goal. I really encourage the school board members to get very specific about what it is we're trying to do and how many kids, from what communities, what ethnicities, what backgrounds, and how many of them are we going to do it and by what period. You're not going to, certainly not going to do it next year, but you're going to get on the glide path to get there at some point. And if you do that, then it's going to force a whole series of actions that people have been talking about. To really make that change, you're going to have to do a lot of the things that people have been talking about. Getting into the families perhaps, lots of interventions, lots of parental support, guidance, parenting, all kinds of things. If you really set an aggressive mark, but it can't be just we're going to increase. You really have to set that mark and then you can develop a strategy. What's being suggested as a, as a, an amendment to that is one specific tool. Now, do I want to tell you what tool to use to get to that point? Do I want to say you must use this particular tool to get there, not knowing what else is involved in your strategy? And I'm just reticent to do that. I'm just reticent to say, I want you to establish the goal. I want you to develop a holistic strategy, but then I want you to use this tool. And if I do that, then you're no longer responsible for, for producing the result and there's no accountability. That's the only minor little problem I have with it.
Good, thank you. Councilman Jennings?
Thank you very much. So there are a couple of things I want to speak to. First, I want to get clear understanding from the staff on the year-long planning process to develop a regional college promise program rooted in replicating and scaling best practices that we've seen from other cities. And it's a year-long pro, planning process. And in that process, we will, at that point, start including other school districts who may feel left out right now. Is that true or not?
That is absolutely the vision. And it could start as early as, you know, later this week after this resolution is approved by both the joint council and school board.
So, so as we go through that process and we create the two-by-two, the two-by-two will have to be extended to other school districts in order for them to be able to come onboard as well. And, and I think that's a good idea because as we get through that planning process, some who don't feel like they're at the table now can come in early and be a part of the year-long planning process in order to make this whole thing better.
Absolutely. And if I may add, just add to that, the inclusion of the business community, like something like the Metro Chamber of Commerce and the higher ed partners would also be part of that planning process.
And, and, and I just also want to be clear that the A through G that we're talking about now is what's on the page in front of us. But that A through G, once we go through the year-long planning process, could end up being A through Z when they come back to us in September of 2019. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. We're going to have to engage partners, find out what that looks like. We do want to be very intentional with those partners because research shows to focus on and do well a few things and then build out to get to Z eventually to make sure everything before that.
So what we see tonight may not be inclusive of what the college promise program will look like as we come back and look at it again in September of 2019. And I think my, my, my recommendation to the committee would be that September the 19th is one year from now. And I would like to, I personally would like to have some form of a six-month update on their progress, the number of partners that we have at the table, who's participating, where are they in the process, what help do they need from us? All those things so that the community can truly get engaged and involved in this process. So that would be my recommendation is, let's not wait a year, but six months from now, come back.
Absolutely. And that's actually something we've already discussed and started to calendarize, is coming back to council, maybe not as a joint meeting, but individually coming back to the school board and to the city council to report out on the efforts.
Great. Well, when I read it here, right now, it says September 19th, 2019. So that's why I want to make sure. So I wanted to thank all the presenters for presenting this wonderful program. And I want to thank the speakers for coming out tonight to really express how you feel about what's going on in, in Sacramento. One speaker said, we are all in agreement that more need to go to college. And I don't think there could be a truer statement in that statement. And most of the speakers didn't say this specifically, but I'm going to say it for them, that we have to be more intentional in making sure that black students get to college. And I heard that loud and clear. Because I heard also loud and clear that there is no confidence that this college pro, promise program will impact students of color, specifically black students of color, based on what they have seen, what they've been involved in so far. They have a lack of confidence in the suspensions, expulsions, promotions, graduation, and what it will be, what it, what it is to become a well-educated workforce. So in order to get involved in this process, to change what we have seen in the past, we have to continue to get engaged, not only at meetings like this, but we've got to get engaged in that year-long process of developing college promise program so that we have a voice at the table and not just at this meeting of the two boards and two governing bodies. We have to be, we have to inspect what we expect. We have to get involved in every single step of the process in order to make sure that the change that we want to see is going to take place. And so I'm speaking to all those who came and spoke tonight. That tonight, today is not the end, it's just the beginning. And although we don't have confidence right now in what we've seen, our confidence will come with the work that we do over the next 12 months and over the next five years. And so I too want to look at what's going on in Long Beach. I know they've been working for over 11 years in that program. I too want to see what kind of success that they've had with people of color, specifically African-American students, specifically black students. I too want to see what's going on in Stockton and other cities around the board. So I hope that, I'm supporting this program. I gave the second to Councilmember Guerra in order to push this program because I too agree, it's something that we all want and need. But in order to get the kind of impact that we have to have, it's going to take all of us to be involved, engaged, and involved in making it happen. Those are my comments.
Thank you, and they're great comments, everybody. Just, oh, we do have.
We do have a couple of.
A couple of board members. No, 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 I can, I'll wait.
So we have comments from Board Member Minnick, followed by Board Member Vang.
Thank you. So I just want to, and Councilmember Jennings touched on this. I just wanted to, you know, reiterate the fact that this is not the end result. This, this document is really the beginning for us to be working together. And I really appreciate all the very real and legitimate concerns that folks brought forward with this, with this college promise. And this year of, of planning is going to give us the opportunity to really delve into a lot of those concerns so that when we get to September of 2019, that we will have, we'll be ready to truly implement something that's not only addresses the need, but is responsive to what the community really wants. So I really appreciate everything that, that folks shared tonight in, in doing that. I also want to just articulate how much I appreciate this idea of this being a shift in creating more of a college-going culture. As the first person in my family who attended a college and because of that, I started at Sac State when I was 30 because I was discouraged from attending college in, in my family. There was no, no one that saw it as, as valuable. Had I been in an environment where the, the options and the availability was front and center for me when I was in high school, it would have very much changed the, the direction I would have gone at, at an early age. And I also appreciate in this, in this resolution, the inclusion of things like dual enrollment. As a, as an instructor at Sac City College, some, often my, a lot of my best students have been high school students from our district that are taking the college courses that I teach. And that allows a much smoother transition into college once these young people have had this opportunity ahead, ahead of time. So I appreciate that being. Then the last thing I just want to say is that I appreciate all the work that went into this from staff, both the district staff and the city staff. It was a lot of research and I'm sure it is not easy for two slow-moving bureaucracies to come together and, and make this happen in such a short timeline. And I really appreciate all the, the work they put into this. And I'm really excited to start this process of our coming together to make this happen. So thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Vang?
So I know it's almost, it's already past nine, so I'll keep this as short as possible. I just also want to say, I think setting the intention of the resolution at the beginning is key. And I, I don't know if this is possible, but I would actually like to also make another amendment to Section 3 and add a line because I think language in the resolution is really critical. And I think that we need to explicitly state that we have a commitment to closing the opportunity gap for the lowest achieving stu, students, our black and our students, our black students and our students with disability. I think that we need to actually explicitly lay that out in the resolution so that there's a commitment from, from both the school district and the city. I also wanted to just, you know, have a conversation. I think, you know, Councilmember Carr did mention that, you know, he's a little perplexed how, you know, someone like me who grew up, you know, low-income poverty was able to go to college. And I would say it was because I had an amazing teacher. I was lucky enough to have an amazing teacher who worked with me every Tuesday and Thursday night until 11 o'clock to make sure I had scholarships, right, so that I can go to college. But like Councilmember Guerra said, we can't base it on luck. I was one of the lucky ones, right? And we need to be able to create those conditions so that no one should have to base it on luck to make it to college. Again, I think the only thing I would like to add, given that it's already past nine, is that if we could really set the intention of the resolution and make sure that in the resolution, we say that we have a commitment to closing the opportunity gaps for our lowest achieving students, our black students and our students with disability, I would like to make that amendment. Lastly, one more thing is, I also just want to thank every single community member that came out today to really speak your truth about what's happening in Sac City Unified School District. And I also want to share that, you know, as the Chair of the Policy Governance Committee, I've been working with the committee. President Ryan is on that committee with First Vice President Wu as well. And I'm working with Ms. Pryor and a few of our African-American community groups to really start looking around student discipline. And so I really encourage community folks, members, students, parents to get involved, right? This work, as a, as a school board member, I always tell my parents, I'm only one vote, right? And even if we have school board members who are committed, we can't do this alone, right? We need our parents, our community to also demand that we do everything in our power to make sure that we protect our students, that we give them the best opportunity. And so this is also my call out to the community to also join us as we begin this work that's very necessary to ensure that we improve outcomes for all of our students. Thank you.
And Board Member Vang, I just want to make sure that I am hearing your suggested amendment correctly. You're suggesting that under college readiness and completion, we would add a Section E that has explicit language around a commitment to closing opportunity gaps.
Among our lowest achieving students.
By race, ethnicity, and among our lowest achieving students.
Councilman Guerra?
That would be a welcomed change to the motion, amendment.
Okay, the second by, you accept that, Councilmember Jennings, the second, okay? And on the board side, okay?
Yeah.
Good, that'll.
Excellent.
And, and as the maker of the motion on the district side, I would agree to those friendly amendments.
I think those are excellent amendments. We're going to hear from Student Harbo and a final comment from Board Member Cochran.
Thank you. I'd like to start by saying that I agree with what a lot of people have said now, that I think this is a great start and a great program that can start to get more of our students to graduate and more of our students to get involved in college. As a rising senior, I understand the difficulty and confusing ways of the college application process and how high the price tag of just the application process is. And I'm one of the lucky ones who had both parents attend college and an older sister who came years before. And I'm still lost half the time and scared of the price of college. So I know that this is a great opportunity for the students, from a student's perspective. But at the same time, there is clearly more that we can do. And I'm really excited to be a part of the process in expanding what this promise means for all of the students in our district. Also, I'd love to urge that we get students involved in the process because as we were just saying, parents and community members need to be involved, so do the students because they're the ones being affected by these policies and by the implementation of these policies. So getting the students' voice is very important.
Thank you, Student Member Harbo, excellent comments. Board Member Cochran?
Yes, I'd like to thank Councilmember Jennings for asking for the six-month update. Any kind of program has to be monitored to make sure that it's working. I'd like to ask the team to go ahead and cull under that as soon as possible. And we do have the update. It's very important for the community members who have voiced so much valid concern about what we do in the district to be able to have input as well at the six-month point. I want to thank you for all your comments and I think this is a great plan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Cochran. I have a, oh, actually, Mayor Steinberg has been waiting.
Real briefly, thank you. First of all, you know, you learn something with every new experience. And tonight I learned that while the issues may be formally different before the city council and the school board, I hear the public testimony, there's actually a lot of similarities. Lot of, you know, lot of call for equity, for investing in our, obviously our children, but in our disadvantaged neighborhoods and to build an inclusive Sacramento. And that's very important and actually reaffirming for me to know that it's not just the city, it's not just the school district. It's, it's, when there's a controversy within one of our camps, we've talked about this before, it really isn't just about that institution. It's about our entire community. We always need to think of it that way. This promise is very aspirational and appropriately so. And it's a great launch, launch point. But I want to break down one issue, not tonight, but I just want to make sure that there's real attention paid to this. The city's contribution to this, among hopefully many contributions, will be to be the bridge, if you will, between public education and the business community around pathways and around this notion of paid internships. And in, in the city, it's no secret, we've launched this thousand-strong. We also have summer at City Hall. We've got the Lighting and Landscape Internship Fund. We also have summer at City Hall, we've got the Lighting and Landscape Internship Fund. And I must say, in the first year and a half, I'm both pleased and gratified with those businesses that have stepped up and the active participation of the school district and school districts. You were incredibly generous and forthcoming with your resources and contribution to buy into this vision. And yet, when I look at the numbers overall, I say, man, this is hard. It's actually a bit of a slog, right? Our numbers are in the hundreds, which is fine, I guess, for a start, but like all of you who run for office and serve, I'm pretty impatient. And I want to have an honest discussion within this months-long negotiation and discussion about what the impediments are here, what it's going to take from the school district beyond the financial contribution to really help us build this program, and what we need to do to make it easier for your students, and what it's really going to take to engage the business community. Mr. Smith is here tonight, really appreciate it from the Metro Chamber. But this is, you know, in all fairness, the Metro Chamber, by the way, has done a great job. But this is kind of a side issue for the business community. And it can't be. And, you know, we have $1 billion apparently in the region being spent on workforce development. And we need Chancellor King and everybody's help in marshaling existing resources and figuring out, are we using these as effectively as we could? Because this is a key piece of this, real workforce experience, because that's the bridge from high school to college and career. So I want to make sure that there's some real focus and some honest assessment of what it's going to take to enhance our partnership around providing paid work experience, right? Paid internship, paid work experience for our students in your high schools, because it shouldn't just be 150 or 200 or 250, it's got to be in the thousands. And we have a long way to go, and there are a lot of barriers to break down. And I know Mr. Jasso's here from our cities economic, running cities economic development. This is a key piece of our economic development strategy, and we need our team to be sitting down with the school district and figuring this piece out. I'm ready to vote.
Thank you, Mayor Steinberg. We'll get to that, absolutely. I want to thank both the council members for their thoughts and suggested amendments, as well as our school board members for their thoughtful contributions and explicit language around our commitment to closing opportunity gaps for those quite often left behind. A California college promise, a Sacramento regional promise, is only as strong as our commitment to ensure that it is a promise for all students. One of the things that is always remarkable to me is this idea that quite often, we will hear that not all students are college material. But when we hear that statement, that statement is usually not, my child isn't college material. It's often, your child isn't college material. And it often is an undervaluing of the lifetime potential of students of color. And the most powerful piece of the promises that have been developed across the state, such as the Long Beach Promise, those that have been instituted and seen the greatest results, is that they are really at the bedrock, at the heart of the proposal, based on universal access, which is this idea that we are promoting a college-going culture that says each and every one of our students, irrespective of their socioeconomic status, irrespective of the color of their skin, has the opportunity to pursue and achieve post-secondary education. And that is at the heart of this work. When done well, we see that we improve our high school graduation rates. We also know that after we get our students into college, we have to remove barriers to their completion. This proposal is including a seamless onboarding through the assessment process into college-level coursework, because the graveyard of buried hopes, particularly for black and brown students, is where they are assessed and placed once entering the community colleges. And so we're automatically looking to remove that through the data-sharing agreement that we already have in place, so that we are placing students upon entrance to a community college into college-level math and English, so that they can continue to move through. I think we also know that we're focused on seamless pathways. And I know that with the individuals we have at this table, and the partners who stand willing to support this work, we can achieve it. And ultimately, I so appreciate Councilmember Carr's comments, because I think that the language of the college commitment itself is aspirational and powerful in an aspiration that says all students should have access to post-secondary opportunity. But without concrete goals and explicit language around how we are going to focus on closing racial achievement gaps, as well as our gaps for our lowest-performing subgroups, including students who are in special education, we will not see this reach its full potential. And so I think that as we move towards the two-by-two and the continued work, and the report that we'll have in the interim after six months, these should be the focuses of our build-out. So with that, I know that we have a motion in a second. I'll turn it over to Mayor Steinberg to take his.
This is the fun part. For the city council, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, that is a five-to-nothing vote, the resolution passes.
Wonderful. And we have a motion in a second from our board, our student preferential vote.
Aye.
And can I have an aye from all those in favor?
Aye.
We also have unanimous support, the motion carries.
Great. First item together. That's excellent. Now we move to item two, and it is 9:15, and this item took a time. I'd like to, Madam President, see if we can get us all out of here by, say, 10 o'clock, and maybe we'll move through this. This is the joint use item. And the resolution is actually very simple. We want to direct our respective staffs to meet together to enhance joint use opportunities for the city. I will begin with this. The city and the Sacramento City Unified School District used to have a comprehensive joint use agreement. We do not today. And there are many reasons for that. I think a lot of it was recession-driven, when, you know, the terrible cuts took place. It was difficult enough to just keep the services that we were directly responsible for providing. And the idea of collaboration and joint use sort of became secondary. I've talked to the board president here, and I think it is our intention and our desire to see a robust effort between our lead staffs, and again, our members, if we do the two-by-two here, to re-up a comprehensive joint use agreement, both in terms of site, but also in terms of programming. For there are many, and it's a little disregarding to refer to these as one-offs, because they're very significant initiatives, actually. Some joint use, whether it's Clara, Floyd Farms, or Didion Middle School, or Sojourner Truth, or the pool at Grand High, or Natoma High, and certainly the one I love that's most recent, is the city put in a little seed money, about $28,000, to help the district, which putting up the lion's share of the money, to bring back elementary school flag football and basketball, like over 30 teams, right? And this hearkens back to my youth, I just must say. You know, as I always say, short but slow. But I played flag football, and I can remember to this day, 1970, scoring the winning touchdown in the elementary school championship game. And that's, the memories are rich. And so to bring this back, man, that is phenomenal. But it just like then begs the question, what more can we do here if we help each other a little bit or a lot? But we want to do this more comprehensively, site-based, but also program-based. I turn it over to you. Jesse, I'm sorry, your comments, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Mayor.
Want to go first?
I was just going to say, given your very thoughtful comments, and that they may have obviated the need for a staff presentation, maybe we punt this to the two-by-two and come up with a recommendation from the two-by-two that can come back to us, either together at a joint meeting or separately at our bodies.
I think we, yes, I think we can do that. I mean, I certainly did not mean to obviate the need for any sort of a staff presentation. I know it's getting late. Maybe just briefly, let's frame it this way. Well, sorry, what are the?
Yeah, and I'll move approval.
Okay, it's moved on one side, needs to be moved on the other side.
We have a second.
We have a second. I can read my members here. Here we go. What in your view are the biggest obstacles to joint, to building back joint use between, in a genuine way, between our city and our school district? We'll take public comment. But go ahead. Challenges, real briefly, go through it.
Okay. So these actually apply to both the school district and the city, varying degrees, depending on what we're talking about. Obviously, cost recovery is huge for both of us. We just, that needs to be foremost on our minds. This type of a joint use agreement or long-term partnership will likely result in the need for additional staff, we need to look at that as well. The district has a big issue with security. We passed a, or we sold a $10 million bond not too long ago, which we are starting to look at doing our safety and security around our school sites. The industry trend towards that is perimeter fencing and a single point of access. So we just need to, we need to put that on the table and see if we move forward with that, how those impediments might be worked out, so that we can provide that access. You know, a big thing, of course, is restroom availability and what happens at sites over the weekends when we don't provide those facilities. Our plant managers on Monday morning typically have to go around and pick up all sorts of paraphernalia and other trash-type objects from playgrounds and fields and overflowing trash bins, because we just don't have the facilities there for people to use like they would, I think, if they were present. We also would need to establish a priority use. We are governed by ed code with the Civic Center Act. We would just need to establish what trumps what, in terms of who wants to use what facility and when. And then, of course, we would have to address the liability. How is the liability provided, so that if somebody does get hurt, we'll still all be sued. But it would be nice to have the liability question answered. Those are, those are pretty much the major challenges, I think, again, applied to both city sites and school district sites.
Shannon, anything you want to add?
Again, it mirrors pretty much what the city would be faced with. It's always regarding, you know, around fees. Infrastructure is also a challenge with our aging infrastructure. You know, we want to make sure we provide safe facilities, so we need to focus on that, you know, maybe creating partnerships around, you know, improving our infrastructure, around fees. And then, you know, we are continuing to collaborate with schools and community-based organizations. So moving forward, we really want to continue that partnership.
Are these obstacles surmountable, from the previous slide, in your view?
I think everything has an answer, it's just how we get there. And what are the resources needed to be able to get there and accomplish it? But no, I don't think anything is insurmountable. I think, you know, as we've got up here on the slide, it is a great opportunity to get back together again. You know, years ago in the 80s, when there was funding at the state level for joint use agreements, you saw that a lot between school districts and cities, where we would build parks, you know, parks next to school sites. Well, then, you know, enter the era of security, where now we're throwing fences up between parks and school sites. So it's just a different era, but I don't think anything is insurmountable.
And one of the larger challenges that we both share are the creation of maybe a master facility use agreement. We have a lot of sport groups that are looking for baseball fields or soccer fields, and we might not have them close to where they are. They, you know, don't want to drive 20 miles to go, you know, and play soccer within their community. So, you know, could we create a regional master facility guideline that, you know, would work with the city and the school district, and maybe look at another third-party nonprofit that, you know, would collaborate with us on scheduling, programming, renovation of the fields, and a potential additional fee to help offset those costs? All items that we could definitely explore.
Thank you. I do want to point out, just in terms of the opportunities, since you outlined the challenges quite articulately, and Vice Mayor Hanson spoke to some of the best joint use partnerships we've engaged in in the past, there is precedent for this work. We've seen it done in cities like San Francisco and Boston. Well, we've seen some innovative partnerships where teachers and community members were trained to help be able to open and close and provide monitoring to the school sites. But ultimately, for me, what is profoundly real and evident is that quite often, our schools are community hubs. And when we lock off the space, when our surrounding areas have little or no green space in some pockets throughout our communities, we're doing a disservice to our families. And so this idea that we look at how we can, in an innovative way, open our spaces to be the community hub that they once were, is very attractive. And I think that some of the challenges you have outlined, while real, are not insurmountable. It's a matter of the will and the desire to figure out how we pilot, learn from the challenges, and then scale for the benefit of all communities throughout the Sacramento region. I would like to request, before we go to a public comment, and I know that the mayor will be taking that, that we do, as a next step in addition to the two-by-two, an analysis at the staff level of all school sites where the surrounding communities have no parks or additional green space in a radius less than a quarter mile.
It's appropriate. Vice Mayor, before we take this up?
Yeah, I just, I know I was eager to move quickly. I just want to add a couple things, because I think, as we tease this apart, it's important to distinguish the types of things that we're talking about. There are long-term partnerships like Clara, or maybe the Marshall School Project, or even Washington Elementary, which actually has a city park on-site that's exclusive use of the school during the day, where I think it makes sense to have sort of a different bucket. Then there's the one-off things, where maybe the city needs to host a community meeting, like the one we're having tonight. Or the school district may want to use a city facility for something, for a public purpose, a public meeting. And then, like, we, this last year, got displaced for one of our egg hunts, and we moved to a school site. And we found that the parents and families liked that more, because they were used to using that site. And so there's greater participation. And the school liked it, too, because they got the families on-site for more than just classroom time. So I think those are another one. And then the third bucket is really private use of these facilities that may have some overlapping purpose. How we, you mentioned school facilities are essentially community facilities. And I think for our staff, we have an ongoing tension between the lack of community centers in neighborhoods and the availability in others. And I think that there may be a way to look at the augmentation of city facilities and school district facilities as a way to be complementary. And we can use maybe some of our fee recovery programs, if you need that, or other things to help support your staff and your cost recovery by using our mechanisms to assist. So that's kind of the line of thinking I would like the staff to pursue as we work on this and the two-by-two.
Excellent. Why don't we hear the public testimony? Now, how many people do we have signed up?
We have 10.
20?
10.
10.
I will time them.
Okay.
Okay. So the first three are Beth Coster, Leon Lamb, Megan Wiegand.
Two minutes apiece, please.
Good evening. Thank you so much for this opportunity to come and talk about the joint use agreement. I am Beth Coster. I live in Councilmember Jennings' district, and I'm here representing the three oldest and largest youth sports organization in our district. Pocket Girls Softball, Pocket Little League, and Greenhaven Soccer. We are thrilled with this idea, and I want you all to know that within the community, and I believe not just our community, but communities throughout the city and the district, you will find organizations like us, who are ready, willing, and able to support this joint use agreements. We're focused right now primarily on fields. I think we'll all agree, the fields are not, the playing fields are not quite in the condition we'd all like them to be. We're ready. Resources are scarce, but if we combine resources, and we're willing to participate in that, I know we can improve the conditions, not just for the kids that go to school during the day, but those same kids who come back in the evening to participate in softball, baseball, and soccer. So as we move forward with this exciting opportunity, please know that you have community organizations like ours that are willing to join in this and improve conditions for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I know it's getting late, so I will keep it short and sweet as possible. Thank you for your time this evening. I, coming from Asian Resources, I'm Leanne Lamb. I work out in the office on the Stockton Boulevard. Prior, about a year ago, we entered into a joint venture, venture with CB Wire to acquire that location, and since have tripled our sizing. So, we came from about 3,000 square feet to about 9,000, and have been able to fully utilize the space to our advantage and also the community's advantage. We're able to, since then, double the sizes of our ESL classrooms, right? There are English Language Development classrooms. We were serving about 125 students to now well over 250 students to date today. In addition to our ESL classes, we provide services, including citizenship classes, cover California enrollments, Medi-Cal, SNAP to skills, just so many, just an array of programs that we're able to provide to these community members, and, and including financial literacy as well. We are not all work and no play. This community center has allowed us to open up our doors, to have more space. We're able to start a trunk-or-treat event at our site, and it's given us the opportunity to kind of be welcomed into this community because the space hasn't been used for quite some time now. Our neighbors have told us that it is welcoming to have a community center there that wasn't there before. They feel safer because this space is, is being utilized. And, you know, in addition to that, we're able to do larger turkey drives, Christmas toy drives for the community, and, you know, we're able to host classes for also our seniors. You know, on, on Wednesdays, you can stop by and see us with the ballroom dancing classes there. So, just the space that we've been able to acquire with this joint venture has allowed us to get out to the community and just assist so many more of our population members.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for telling us a good news story. Appreciate it.
Hi, everyone. My name is Megan Wiegand. I'm the Executive Director of Clara. It's been name-checked a few times tonight as an example of public-private partnerships that work, so I'm here to bring some examples of the ways that we've created value for the city and the district. I think that there's a lot of value to be captured here in more partnerships, and I commend you for beginning this conversation today. Clara basically happened because we had four cultural mainstays in Sacramento that were searching for a permanent and affordable home. The district had a decommissioned building in Midtown that was serving as a drain on district resources, and the district wasn't able to contract directly with our nonprofit. But the city, which of course has a stake in ensuring the growing vibrancy of Sacramento by guaranteeing the survival of these arts organizations, came on first as an intermediary, and then ultimately as a full partner, funding critical repairs like fire and life safety and seismic retrofitting, which allowed the building to be returned to a full, complete, vibrant use. And for its part, in exchange, the Clara has done its best to be a good partner and generate benefits back to the district and the city. On the district side, the trade was always about facilities in exchange for arts education and arts access. Last year, Clara provided more than 1,700 students with standards-aligned arts programs, many of them for the first time. More than 80% of those students received over 10 hours apiece of programming, and the monetary value of those programs, which clocked 200,000 last year, and will be a quarter of a million dollars this year, is a drop in the bucket compared to the impact that continued commitment to arts access has on student success, college readiness, and the future earnings of these students. That 200K figure does not include the money that Clara paid to local artists who came to the schools for each of these programs. Clara invests in the local economy, helping performing artists earn a living wage in this city where they actually live, which is a rare and wonderful thing.
Thank you.
And I'm going to go on, but I just say again, thank you very much for your investment and continuing to do this.
Fabulous job. Thank you.
The next three are Amber Stott, Drew Bryanton, and Zoe Anthony Avery.
And don't forget, the city put $2.5 million into Clara to make it happen.
It was a wonderful-
It was a big, along with 5 million from the Rayleys. No, sorry, we did five, Rayleys did five, uh, $2.5.
That's joint, that's joint use.
And I, and I was pointing out to Mayor Steinberg today that Clara more than quadrupled the number of students that they delivered educational benefits to this year solely because they believed it was the right thing to do.
Yep.
Fabulous. Megan, welcome.
Thank you. For many Sacramento children, their zip codes will determine their health. Where they live will determine whether they live in a food desert or have access to farmer's markets, and whether they have safe parks to play in. As the Executive Director of the nonprofit Food Literacy Center, we see the results of this firsthand when we work with kids who have never seen broccoli before. We are grateful to serve in a school district, sorry, we are grateful to serve in a school district that is working proactively to address these health disparities. When we pool our resources through city, district, and private resources, we can improve neighborhoods that have historically been left out. Food Literacy Center is working with both the district and the city to bring a cooking school and farm to Lee Atata Floyd Elementary, which will serve students in the district and families in the community. We will focus on improving the lives and healths of, health of these students and their families. This is critical in a neighborhood where 100% of our kids are on free and reduced lunch programs, and where the average annual income is $8,000 for a household. We look forward to inspiring kids to eat their vegetables and working side-by-side with these families as they become active advocates for their own health. So, thank you for making these opportunities like Floyd Farms possible and for also making them a priority.
Thank you, Megan.
Good evening. My name is Drew Brereton. I'm a parent of three Sac City Unified School District children, and I want to thank you for considering this partnership. I would ask that in addition to sites that are more than a quarter-mile from a city park, I'd respectfully urge you to consider prioritizing making school playing fields safe and usable, particularly those used by neighborhood recreational youth sports programs. Things like neighborhood softball, neighborhood little league, neighborhood soccer. We're not talking about elite athletics here. We're, we're talking about sports for the kids next door, programs that represent the diversity of our community. Why do we need to prioritize these fields? Well, they promote health and fitness. They're serving our kids not just nine months out of the year, but 12. This is really where the kids meet and play all year long. But unfortunately, they're in desperate need of some, some resources. For example, the soccer field where my daughter practiced last night wasn't watered all summer long, and when we returned from practices, unfortunately, the girls are falling down on weeds that are among dirt instead of on grass where they should be playing. The Caroline Wensel softball fields where the pocket softball program plays, and my daughters played this spring, the outfield is full of holes. The girls are tripping and falling, turning their ankles. These things matter to our kids, so I would urge you to please use this partnership to keep our kids healthy and active. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Zoe and Anthony left, so the next three are Lisa Miller, Devin Lavelle, and Anna Mulander.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg, President Ryan, and council and board members. My name is Lisa Miller. My organization is Pivot Sacramento, and we are housed in the Fruit Ridge Community Collaborative, which is the former Fruit Ridge Elementary School and the elementary school I attended from kindergarten to sixth grade. We just happen to benefit from one of the joint use or repurposing schools that had been closed, and right now, there are over 30 school districts there. Some of them shares a room or share space, so two agencies in one room. It's really benefited the nonprofit organizations because we have cost-effective space, we have lower administrative costs, which means we have more money for program. We also have exposure to a lot of community representatives we would not have run into you outside of being in the community resource center. We also have opportunities to collaborate with the organizations that have like programs or have, offer a gap in the services that we provide for our participants. So, in our building, we have employment programs, we have financial management, GED, high set preparation, we have green education and employment, summer programs, so summer camps and, and kids programs, summer lunch site, we have youth and adult mentoring, immigration help, Birth and Beyond is there, we have a community incubator lead for the Black Child Legacy, community events, healing circles, and we just did a vision and, and dental free offer to our community. We have movies there, summer camps, big holiday events, and we have karate, free karate for the community, as well as a Pop Warner football team there. So, we have really benefited both for the nonprofit organizations as well as the community. Most of our programs are free for the community, and we are actually reaching out to South Eagle Park and low-income communities to make sure that they have the resources they need. So, I just want to thank the, the board who made it possible, Sacramento School District who supports us on a regular basis, and here's a call from everybody in the building. We really appreciate your help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Another great example. Thank you. Mr. Lavelle?
Mayor Steinberg, President Ryan, council, school, school board, thank you for doing this tonight. This is very exciting, a tremendous first step that we can work together and really provide better services, more opportunities for recreation, better health, and do it together. We've got great people on both sides of the stage, great people working in City Hall and at Center Center, and I know together we can do a heck of a job to provide better recreation, health, and fun for kids and families in every neighborhood of the city during the school day and after. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Devin. Who is next?
Anna Mulander.
Anna Mulander, right. Good evening.
Why do they make the microwave, or the microphone so high? Thank you so much for doing this. I want to bring up, in addition to what Mr. Brereton said about youth sports, I want to bring up the opportunity to really use these sites to activate neighborhoods, and every school site can really be used in that opportunity. The more we have community members without students who use those facilities on the sites, the richer our schools will be. And it will be that way because these community members will vote for bond measures. They will see the facilities, and they will understand why our children are in need. And they will also understand what other amenities we can have at the school sites. We can have a better swimming pool if people are using lap lanes in the morning and paying for that. We can also have high school students who are acting as lifeguards. So, it's an opportunity to use every community dollar in more than one way. But I want to end tonight to implore you with all due speed. Let's do this thoughtfully, but there are school sites that have completely unusable fields, and I'd like to implore you, especially school board members, to walk San Brandon. It's completely unusable, it's unsafe, and I would ask you to please be thoughtful in your approach to the school sites and making sure that all of our schools, whether they have an active parent base or not, are getting the facilities they deserve. Thank you.
The next, the last two are Jamar Jefferson and Mac Worthy.
Good evening. Let me thank y'all that created and asked for his favor. I'm not 100% opposed to this, but poverty creates crime. The cost increase, who will pay for it? I heard several people, they, the primary focus is on sports. Once again, if you, someone do a study, a lot of potentially black men are in prison because they was distracted playing sports, little league. Struggling families, working co-parents, elderly on a fixed budget, we need to be thinking about ways to lower the cost of living. Whenever a contract is signed, someone has to pay, and usually, cost is passed over those who already are at a disadvantage. If you are to do this, I, I really hope that you're paying attention to, you're going to invite opportunities for more crime. It will happen. I used to stay in Pocket, and it's a nice area, then I moved over to Meadowview, and I used to go to Natomis. They were shooting out in the open in the broad daylight, right? Shooting, just bam, bam, shooting. I had to run around the building at Starbucks. Really think about this. I mean, I know y'all have good intentions, but it shouldn't be about the money, right? It should be about lowering taxes, it should a little bit about creating and providing better services for people in safer environments, right? Education, I like what Mr. Clark said, we should be talking about entrepreneurship and empowerment. That's what should be the focus. Have a good one.
Thank you. Mr. Worthy?
Isn't you going a little backwards here? Now, we heard all about the community centers. What happened to them? That was the expansion of the city. Ain't nothing going on. We know there was a school, DeBaker School, nothing going on. We had a pool up at Sac High, nothing going on. You know, utilize those things, but you got nobody. You talk about this diversity, but not one black woman has stood up here and said anything about this type of program. Where are your head? Who represent those people, say African-American? I'm an American Negro. I represent myself and my family. But we don't see nothing here. We, we, we don't see nothing. When you go to Kennedy High football game, why don't they let the kids out that oppose you? They go out the back, and the ones that's playing go out the other side. Isn't that segregation? But yet still, you can say, you know, we gonna unite here, but you say you put a petition between them, and they go that way, and you don't bring those kids together, but you gonna say we gonna unite the city? Go to Grant's game, they go through the same hole. Everybody go through the same hole. But yet still, when you go to Kennedy High, they go out that way. Something ain't right here. Babies gonna go play, where is to go play over at the community center in Oak Park? Softball or baseball? Wasn't those things on the table when you first designed them? No, because you didn't know what you was doing. Just like the man say, who gonna pay for this? It ain't no more money, folks. It's no industry. Ain't no new money come here in the past five years. So, who gonna pay for this? Wake up before you make the decision. You making some bad decision, and Hal made bad decision, and we'll continue to make bad decision. But you gonna say, oh, we gonna do this for the babies? People, wake up.
Okay. So, that concludes the, the public testimony. Again, it's a relatively simple resolution, but maybe just a, a comment or two, and I'll turn it over to Board President Ryan, of course. I, I would like to add to the resolution, if we might, whoever the makers of the motion might be, a couple of things. Number one, that we do the two, that we do the two-by-two again. Secondly, that we get reports back much sooner than the promise issue, that by the end of the calendar year, we get a report back to our respective boards and bodies. And I would ask this, not that we expect to have a comprehensive joint use agreement by the end of the year, but I know I would love to see from our end a timeline for the development of such a comprehensive plan. And secondly, a single deliverable by December that is a, that is a, that, that shows we're moving in, in the right direction in terms of a shift in policy that, that brings us together more on the joint use question.
Mayor?
Yes. Vice Mayor?
I think that's fine. The one thing that we have, we have at least one joint use issue in play, maybe two that I can think of. I would not want this conversation to stop, the work on Floyd Farms or on Old Marshall. And so, as long as that's understood by the staff, Kathy, you've been working so hard probably on both of those, as well as the board members, then, then that would be-
That's fine.
I'll amend my motion to incorporate that and assuming you're-
We're in agreement.
Yeah.
Okay, so that moved in- Okay, so that moved and seconded on our side here?
Wonderful.
Very good.
We have a board member comments from Board Member Minnick, followed by Board Member Wu.
Thank you. So, I really appreciate the folks who spoke, Ms. Lamb, Ms. Miller, about the use of the former school sites, and I know when some of those schools closed, there was a lot of concern about what was going to happen with these spaces, and it's really exciting to see, you know, I've been out to, you know, all these sites many, many times, and seen some amazing stuff that's going on. I appreciate Ms. Mulander speaking too, because she and I were on the 7-11 Committee together where we addressed the kind of needs of all these closed sites and looked at what could be the next incarnation of, of some of these spaces. So I appreciate that. I do want to make sure that another piece to this agreement, or this, this discussion of agreement, doesn't get lost in the discussion as we talk about building space, is the use of our open spaces and our schoolyards after hours and on weekends. This has been an issue that's been really important to me for a long time. I found a, on this day, Facebook post that I posted like 10 years ago about the, how the schoolyard in my neighborhood was locked up and there's nowhere for kids to play. I, just a quick example, I live in Tallick Village, which is near Stockton and Fruit Ridge. Our closest parks are Guerrero Park, Colonial Park, Lawrence Park. To get to any of those, you have to cross Stockton Boulevard, or Fruit Ridge, or 21st Avenue. It's not really realistic for kids in our neighborhoods, and, but we do have two schools within a few blocks, you know, of our home and the surrounding homes. And so I see kids, you know, the, the schoolyards are locked up, so kids are playing in the parking lot there, or in the street out front, in unsafe situations, kids are climbing over the fences, they're on the roof, you know, trying to get in, and it's been this ongoing concern. So I've been doing kind of some outreach and with community groups, there's been a lot of support for the idea of creating open spaces just by unlocking gates, right, after hours, so that kids in the neighborhood have some safer locations to play. And I did do some extra homework, you'll be happy to know, you'll see with your stuff, there's a couple documents on the dais for everybody about the shared schoolyard project in San Francisco and how they went about doing that. It's pretty amazing stuff, as you can guess, San Francisco has a even more limited amount of open space for kids to play, and so this kind of gives us a little bit of, some ideas to start brainstorming around. Now, in my conversations with folks, I know that there are concerns about opening space up, vandalism, homeless encampments, people leaving trash, campus safety, those kind of things, and I absolutely can understand those concerns. I think the need for more park space for our kids is really important, and I don't think those concerns are not manageable. I think that as we work together on this over the course of the next few months, we can start addressing all these concerns as we go. I have had a conversation with Councilmember Guerra about this, and we actually talked about the idea of a two by two, you know, in the past, so I'm happy to see that our colleagues on the board and on, and the council are looking at this as well. And I know I've, I've mentioned to Member Pritchett, as well as the Chair of the Facilities Committee, as someone that might want to participate as well, so we can look at historical context, the best practices, we can address some of these, these concerns and look at next steps. The other, just last piece I want to mention in terms of this kind of joint committee to address this, is I want to make sure that we either have representatives or insight from SAC PD, our school resource officers, the Parks Department, the city, our Facilities Department, and also student leaders, so that we make sure that we are hearing all the concerns and, and have some really good, authentic conversations about how to address some of those needs. And I agree that we need to have some check-ins soon. I would say it's more likely, maybe we look at February or March as maybe an endpoint where we can have some sort of a proposal in place, but then in, in the time between then and, then and now, to have some check-in points at different stages along the game, just like we talked about with the college promise. So, that was my...
Vice President Wu, followed by Member Cochran.
You've got Councilmember Gueda after that.
Thank you, Vice President Minnick, thank you, President Ryan. I see before me a recommendation to pass a motion, so I don't see a resolution. Did I miss a piece of paper?
It's a, it's a resolution to delegate to the respective staffs.
Okay, I appreciate that.
And the two by two to be determined.
And, and so, piggybacking on Vice Mayor Hanson's comment, and I want to thank Beth for bringing to my attention the dire conditions of Carolyn Windsor. And so when I went out there to Carolyn Windsor, and I'm stepping in these gopher holes, and I'm trying not to twist my ankle, there's a row of trees because joint use, SAC City Unified has property that runs and merges into the city of Sacramento's property, and the city of Sacramento property along the Greenbelt and Greenhaven had gophers, just as Carolyn Windsor's field had gophers. But they have started to do something about that, and, and the SAC City Unified has started to do something about it, but the city of Sacramento had a head start. And I look over beyond the trees and I get jealous because their fields are green and their fields are relatively flat. Our fields look like it's leftover from World War I, where there are trenches, where you would expect soldiers to be hiding, and, and the mines having exploded and the bombs having fallen there. I'm, I'm somewhat embarrassed, and so in the spirit, as we're talking about Clara and we're talking about continuing Floyd's Farm, I think I would ask my colleagues if we could continue also on exploring avenues to help eradicate the varmint problems that we have in schools such as Carolyn Windsor and the other really bad schools in our area, which would include, I think, Didion and another, but that one, the other one fails me for, for some reason, but I don't want to wait until the report back. I would hope that our resu, our motion would include directing the staff to continue the discussions and continue the mitigation and eradication discussions that we had, and put them into motion before we come back in February or March with another report.
Do you want to, can we go back and forth a little bit, is that okay, Councilmember Gueda?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. You know, you must, you have a great premonition, because, you know, Board Member Minnick has been talking about creating some kind of joint facility task force since I've known him over in grad school, in fact, and we live down the street from each other, you know, and so I, I'm glad that, that you jumped on it real quick to get this thing, this ball moving. But I, I do want to say that I think, you know, Board Member Minnick has, has brought up a good point. There's a lot of communities that don't have parks or community centers. These, some of our school sites, whether they're closed or open, I think are great places where we're trying to get community engagement, we're trying to build, do capacity building, so I, I want to support this motion to move forward on this. A couple thoughts also, I toured the Sacramento Food Bank, and one of their issues was that they said that, you know, they're trying to address the issue of food insecurity, and I talked to Member Carr, he also brought up how, you know, his district can be kind of a food desert. Well, there are maybe facilities, particularly, we're looking at the central kitchen, Food Bank mentioned that they're looking for places that have larger refrigerator space, maybe these areas could be locations to address some of our, our joint needs of addressing some of the issues about food insecurity. So, there are things to consider in that, I think this two by two is going to help tackle that. Lastly, I, I wouldn't miss this opportunity if I wasn't doing some constituent work here, and, you know, Mr. Woody and Marlene over in the College Greens neighborhood had an issue with some trees on the Thomas Jefferson property, and I'd hope maybe our city arborist and the school property, the school facility folks can work together to, to take a look at those trees and see their health and vitalities, and staff is here. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate the time you've put together on this facility, and thank you, Mr. Minnick, for all the work you've done on this.
Very good.
Member Cochran?
Yes, I would like to draw attention to Ms. Mulander and Mr. Barrigan's comments again. We do, as Member Wu has expressed, have very difficult problems, gopher problems, but here's the thing, we have campuses who have fields that are loved to death, and Kit Carson is one of them. One of the simple solutions, and I'd like to have this explored in these, explore these opportunities in this discussion, that we water, we have a variance to do full watering on these fields, because when you water, you don't have as many problems with the dried-out turf. So this, I think, would have to be a request to the city to have a variance to do this, but it is important.
Thank you, Board Member Cochran. I think we have a question from, or a comment from, we have someone, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Just, just quickly, Member Minnick, thank you for the recommendation, and President Ryan, I respectfully ask as Chair of the Facilities Committee that I be part of the two by two.
Absolutely, thank you. Board Member Pritchett. Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you very much. I want to thank all those who came from District 7 tonight to talk about being a part of the solution, to work with us to make these fields and these facilities a better place for the entire city. We heard you're passionately be a part of that solution, and we accept that and look forward to you being in that. I want to compliment the SAC City Unified School District on the repurposing of the schools. I'm in the nonprofit world when I'm not a council member, and to see Asian Resources Incorporated, to see La Familia at Maple Elementary School, to see the number of nonprofits that are providing programs and services at Fruit Ridge Elementary School, just to name a few, is incredible. And one of the speakers got up and spoke very passionately about the number of services that go into the Fruit Ridge Elementary School that are free to that community, and that school sometimes can be a desert unto itself. And so without having that school with that number of services and programs that are going on, many of those kids would find themselves in trouble doing things that they shouldn't be doing. But that school gives them a place to go after school, and it gives them a lot of purpose, and so what you've done to repurpose those schools have made a significant difference in the city of Sacramento. I want to do the same exact thing for our fields and our facilities.
Yes.
And I think all of us want to do the exact same thing, and I think we have to do a better job, and I'm confident that the two by two will do this, in sharing our resources, in our strategies, in when we are doing things. So there was no reason for the fields in District 7 to look better from the city standpoint and we not share that exact same information with the schools. We should have been doing that together, and it should have been a combined effort, because one of the outcomes that has come as a result of our poor fields has been the decrease in students and kids and families who are now participating in youth, youth sports. I heard one of the speakers talk about the number of people who go to prison as a result of participating in youth sports, and I haven't seen that study, and I don't even know that it exists, but I don't think that that's the case. What I have seen is that youth sports gives many kids purpose, and something to do that helps them to become a part of a team, which goes all the way through the rest of their life, at work, at church, at, in their families, and every other thing that it helps them to become a part of a solution, a part of a family, a part of something that they can carry forth with them for the rest of their life. And I'm a product of that. I'm just one simple product of that, but I can count many more that have done the exact same thing. So, I don't know where that study is, but I don't think it exists. Anyway, I just want to say that I'm passionate about us making what we're talking about in this joint use. I'm passionate about us doing it for kids, and making kids the central part of what it is that we're doing. Adult sports will follow, I'm sure, but this program has to be about making sure that our kids have the opportunity to have a place, a safe place, to play, a safe place to gather, a safe place around their community. In every study that I've read, and I thank you, Board Member Minnick, for the study that you gave on the shared schoolyard project, every, if you read that report, it tells you very passionately that every concern that was talked about in 2007 did not materialize.
That's right.
As a matter of fact, it's just the opposite, that there was improved security, that more kids participated, and there was less vandalism and less break-ins and all those kind of things. So, sometimes our concerns get in the way of progress, but for the us to work together to affect all of our fields and facilities and have something that we can say is a best practice in the state of California is the goal that I, that I, that I'm after, and I'm sure all of us are after the same goal.
Mr. Jennings, you, you're making a rather strong case to be on the two by two committee.
I, I will, I will raise my hand twice.
Let me just say, let me just say...
Be my pleasure.
Love it.
Would be my pleasure.
We have a final comment from Student Board Member Harbo.
I just really quickly wanted to say that I probably participated in every rec sport possible, as well as things like Missoula Children's Theater, and some of my fondest memories happen on the Caleb Greenwood Field and the Glenn Hall Field, which are both very close to my house, and so the benefits that we see from those activities and from things like this are clear, and I'm a great example of that. And, I mean, some of those memories do involve falling in gopher holes or being in mud-filled soccer fields, but it was still worth it and still fun.
Thank you so much.
Vice Mayor had one other suggestion in terms of...
I was merely fanning you.
Thank you.
It's warm up here.
Yes, thank you.
I was going to say this for the last item, but if we're going to create a two by two about these shared interests, the one thing I'd ask too is that we look at having a discussion at that two by two about affordable housing. The city's doing a lot right now to look at how we help those at-risk folks that we were talking about earlier. I think particularly the data about families is very strong, a lack of workforce, affordable housing in particular, that could support teachers or our students who are at risk, could be a good topic. I know it's not usually in the purview of the school district, but there's a couple ideas about how maybe we could partner on, on some things to help on that, so.
Thank you, Steve Member, uh...
Steve Member is fine.
Steve Member, thank you, late, late hour Vice Mayor, and are you suggesting an additional two by two?
No, 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 and I, I mean, I know I made the motion on this, but I'm not even sure we need two two by twos.
Okay.
We could just have the same members work together on all of these items, because I think it, it's fruitful to have the district in ongoing conversation with the city and vice versa, more than the one-off meetings over coffee or, or whatever, so we can be appropriately staffed by the city staff and by your staff.
Thank you.
Let's see what the member interest is, I mean, if there are more members interested in really engage, digging and engaging, we can figure out one or two, two by twos.
And I, I just wanted to make one comment on this, I want to thank all of our community partners who stayed late into the night to offer their commentary about the value of these joint use agreements, in particular, having Amber Stott from Fruit Literacy talking about our liataida Floyd Farm partnership, having Megan Wiegand speak out about our wonderful work that we're doing with Clara, and I proudly have sat on the board for two years now, and, and having Lisa from Sealy Inc. as a representative from Fruit Ridge Community Collaborative. I will tell you, I remember walking the area around my Oak Park community after our Fruit Ridge school site had closed, and people were feeling dejected, feeling like they had no place to go. And what we have been able to do in providing a home for 30 nonprofits with a continuum of services that include the incredible work that Lisa is doing to empower our youth to have jobs with living wages, I know two young men who would probably be struggling with homelessness right now if it wasn't for the work that she's done, and we have myriad other community examples of how that center has been a bright spot for an area that quite often is without hope. And so for me, this is the reason we move forward in these partnerships, safe spaces, community hubs... community hubs, and true joint use and collaboration between city and, and school district to provide our families with their core needs.
Very good. Do we have a motion? No, we do have Mr. Carr here. Mr. Carr.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The question before us is whether or not we should ask staff to take a look at establishing a joint use agreement. It's a very simple question, and I'm ready for it.
With, with, with that, I think the question has been called. I do know that our clerk reminded me that there needs to be a second from the school district side. I'm not sure there was a second.
I'll second that.
Okay.
And so with that, we'll take your vote and then we'll do.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, that motion passes five to nothing.
Wonderful. We have a motion in a second, our student preferential vote.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? The motion carries unanimously once again. Thank you so much for your work.
Well, that concludes our agenda, does it not?
Yes, it does.
Ryan?
Yes, it does.
I just want to thank you again for, you know, your leadership and, and the superintendent and all the members of the board and, and my colleagues and our entire staff. This was a great start. We actually accomplished something, but we all recognize that the work is just beginning. And no more 20-year gaps, okay? Look forward to the reports back and continue to work together. Thank you.
I so appreciate that. Thank you for your leadership, Mayor Steinberg, to the council and the board and all the staff who put countless hours into preparation for tonight, and to your community members who've come out into this late hour. Your input is going to be vital to ensuring that we follow through and develop the right promise and the right joint use agreements. So thank you. And with that, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, and on the city.
We beat you to it.
On the school board's side, motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you.
Okay, all right. I gotta go.